We'll be meeting at nine o'clock. Please silence shut off your cell phones and join us in a little bit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, our little God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Alright, first item on the agenda is a thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, you guys want to come up? I guess we can.
Are you ready?
Yeah. Well, we're here, guys. So, my name's Steve Brown. And I want to say we appreciate you giving us this opportunity. We have some other folks here that would like to share their appreciation of our law enforcement in Lake County. I'll have them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm John.
I'm Davia.
I'm Julie.
I'm Jessica.
Okay, and so John has something he'd like to read you from. Thank you, John. You can take that. Oh, wow.
Lake County Law Enforcement, we're writing this to show our appreciation for all you do. Thank you all so much for keeping Lakeview safe. We all know you and your family's sacrifice a lot to protect us. We appreciate you keeping us safe on our roads and allowing you to ride motorcycles instead of cars. Thank you for enforcing the law in Lake County so that we can live safely and not have to worry about criminals. We appreciate you keeping illegal drugs from entering Lakeview. Thank you for always being there so we can call in an emergency day or night. From Julie, Jessica, Zach, and John Brown.
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate what you do for our community.
Do you guys want a picture?
You want a picture?
Here we go.
Sure. Why don't you give the sheriff a hand?
Yeah, that's okay.
There we go.
Is he here?
He's sitting here.
I volunteer here.
Can I get right in the middle here?
Well, you're gonna have to hold him out. You're gonna have to get him out.
Smile big.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, John.
Is that your boy?
Yeah, John.
Yeah. And we must've got his personality first.
Well, see him.
Sorry, Steve.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Yeah, super finally. So, next on the item on the list is the Department update.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Goodbye.
See ya. Sheriff, if you'd like to get you out of here.
Sure. Currently, we are ninety people under staff. We got two at the academy, we got two on medical, and we have five out on administrative duty for the shooting. The investigation is progressing at a expected pace. I don't know when it's gonna go to the O.K. for a decision or whether it's gonna go to brand jury, but that remains to be seen. I got two people covering shift in the south end. We got three people working shift in the north end. The hours are eleven to eight o'clock. Trying to cover a little bit of the day shift and night shift. I think if we're lucky enough, we're gonna be able to bring a couple people back on late duty this week. And then the rest depends on the investigation. Other than that, things are progressing at a snail's speed. Anything, any questions? Can we push that to the back of the room? Question?
I hope this time.
I have about three or four things. I just got in this room and I'm playing.
They're good, it's coming to your head. It sounds all the time.
They rattled me. Well, I have, yeah, Deputy Albertson is coming back to late duty in about a week. He was injured after. And due to that incident that happened up in the jail, we had car locks on both doors. And then the security door.
When is that gonna happen? Can you explain to these guys where the car lock is?
You know, the car locks are the the cards that you swipe the door to unlock it will have two different parts. For the first doors of the jail and then the interior doors of the jail, they'd be a different part. Right now, if there's an emergency up there, we didn't have the new deputies couldn't find the keys to the jail, so. Taylor was attacked by an inmate. Then he ended up breaking his hand. I see you went out and did some years.
I'm trying to work on my traumatic.
Anyway, he's, he had to have surgery and had to have a screw put in it. And as a result, he's gonna be off for an extended period of time. Hopefully, he'll come back to late duty soon. So, the door that goes from the booking area into where the cells are, we're having that car locked too. And then we're looking at also the possibility of unlocking the cell doors with a push button system. So if you have a person that is more than cooperative, you can push a button, they can enter the cell, you can lock it in. We're looking at, looking at crisis on that too. So it'll just secure a little bit more for officer safety and avoid what we have happened here in the past.
So, if those things fail, is there still a key?
There's an override, yeah, there's a command.
That's the only question I have, I guess.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
So, everybody, thank you for. We're welcome.
Alright, we've got a couple different things up in the interest of time. Jake or Julie?
We got time.
You got time, okay.
Sure. Yep.
Jake, you're up.
So, Department update. I've invited my staff, they're scattered around the room, to come and I know you guys are familiar with my staff, but I don't, I don't quite feel you guys understand what their job duties entail. So instead of me sitting here explaining their job duties and tail, I'm gonna ask them to go ahead and start that. So we'll start with Lily Frank here, and she's right here.
I don't respond at all. So, you could give me a heads up on that and I'll, I have to say I chewed a little bit and I just wrote up a little blurb just to make it bigger and that way I don't miss anything like the sheriff did. So, I'm Lily Anne Frank. I have been with the Lake County Community Justice Department since February of 2012. And I've been performing the probation officer duties since January of 2018. I currently supervise the Drug Court Program caseload as well as the general caseload. The Drug Court Program requires more intensive supervision as these are individuals on downward departures. In other words, individuals eligible for prison sentences. The general caseload includes a variety of crimes, felony and misdemeanors, compact cases, which are individuals residing in another state, etc. My role as a probation officer while keeping the community safe is to help individuals on probation and/or parole to better themselves and to transition to a productive lifestyle and still hold them accountable throughout their term of supervision. Ultimately, our goal as a department and as a team is to prevent recidivism or the risk of these individuals re-invent. And that's pretty much it, in a nutshell.
Well, I'm sorry at this point, you're already not writing. I'm not as organized as Ms. Frank. So, obviously, I'm Rachel Frederick. I supervise our sex offender population as well as rotation for the general caseload. I'm also involved in the statewide Sex Offender Supervision Network, so all the sex offender POs try to keep together on practices and kind of how we supervise that population because it is a little bit different sometimes. I'm also involved in our Survivor Skills Network throughout the state, so trying to keep up on the defensive tactics and different skills.
Is there somebody that teaches that here?
Not in our, we don't have a DT actual instructor in our department right now.
But is there one in Lake County or do we have to go? We do have one down there. Okay, there's our county and stuff there.
Yeah, that's fine. Any questions or?
I guess I said mine before.
Yeah. I had something nice wrote up and then I thought that was too much and so I was gonna do it, Rachel, and then I ended up putting on two stickies.
I'm Mary O'Sullivan and I am a juvenile probation officer. We supervise, Grady isn't here, but it was his day off today. Grady Vanberg is the other juvenile probation officer. We supervise informal and formal probation. So, an informal is, you'll hear it called an FAA, Formal Accountability Priment. A kid gets caught smoking or just not a real serious. We always try to put every kid, if we can, on a FAA to begin with because it doesn't go on their record. And once, it's for a year. Once they get it done, then they're done. So, informal would go on their record. And that's where we go to court with the judge and everything. Grady and I both work closely with the schools. He does up north. I pretty much like you. I attend the MPT meetings once a month. The meeting office holds. I'm on the Lake County Crisis Team. We started that, what, Jake, two years ago? Jake stuck me on the OJDDA committee for the conference two years ago and then COVID hit. So then we planned that one and then had to start over again on this one because everybody said, well, you didn't finish that one. And now we are told that we have to also plan a virtual one. So, thanks to Jake, I'm on that one, but it's been great because I get to know people all over the state and we have a meeting usually twice a month. So, let's see. We run two classes downstairs on the juvenile conference room. MRT is going right now on Mondays, anger management on Wednesdays. We have a homework class on Tuesdays. And I try to help the kids. I don't really, you know, like if it gets very involved in algebra, I can't do it, so. But I can help them with what I can help them with. And it's mainly just to make them get their homework done before they go home. It kind of takes the load off. Most of these kids, where they come from, don't have a support system at home. They've got their teachers and then, believe it or not, they've got us. And it might hate us from the beginning, but they usually end up liking this. I have kids that ask to keep coming back even after their own probation. So, let's see. We have, I have two kids in art therapy that they just came up with through Gloria at the Crisis Center. And those are for a couple kids that are really hard to reach and it seems to be helping them. Let's see, what else? Started RDC, a Resource Development Committee, a couple years ago because most of the counties have it. That's where we have law enforcement, the Crisis Center, male health, somebody from the school. Grady and I are there, Oregon Youth Authority, people from all over this local and from the state. And we have that once a month. And the reason we have that is so we get a tough case that's really involved, it's nice to reach out to all our community partners. Everybody talks about this, we get information. And when we go to court, we've got RDC behind us. We also work closely with Jack Thompson at the ESD Center. We do courtesy supervisions for Oregon Youth Authority, any other county, even a different state might call us for help if they have a kid here. And you're welcome if you kind of stop by our office and show you what we do. You've already been there once, so. That's it.
Thank you.
My name's Jim Nichol and Mark knows exactly what I do because he's done my job.
Not as good as you.
Oh, thank you. So I work as Youth Investment Coordinator down at the Juvenile Department, mostly a support role. So, spent a lot of time in the schools, North Lake, Paisley, Lakeview, meeting with kids individually, some small group type activities. Recently started an explorers program and we were fortunate enough to get fourteen grand for gear and things. So I happily spent that money recently and hopefully some kids will take advantage of that. Other than that, it's, you know, some mentoring type stuff, but also just trying to really encourage and support kids. And this year's been a little different with the COVID situation and seeing kind of different kids as far as my support role is concerned. Funny story about Barry though, moved here twenty-one years ago and on a U-L coming over, I said to my wife, I need some help. And she said, I said, who do you know? And she goes, I got an ex-boyfriend. And I said, she thought, there's no way my husband wants to get ahold of an ex-boyfriend. I said, call that guy. Well, that was Barry. He showed up and helped us unload and I'm still grateful and probably owe you one. Thank you again.
Yeah, we went to Southern Oregon.
Oh, yeah. That's true.
Good story, Jim. Good story. Thanks for letting me follow that up. I'm Victoria Warlecker. I am the Office Manager for the Lake County Community Justice Department. I handle adult and juvenile. I also am the Community Service Work Coordinator. So I help find things for Kenny to do during the day. Kenny isn't here, but he's our work crew foreman. And then I'm also the Treatment Court Coordinator. So I kind of keep track of people is my job altogether. If you need any one of our POs, our director or Youth Investment Coordinator, I usually know where they are at any time during the day. That goes for law enforcement as well. They reach out to me if they need one of these guys and can't get ahold of them. I encourage all of you to come down and visit our office, get the lay of the land and check out our peeps. They're pretty amazing.
So that's a quick snapshot. And as Victoria and I mentioned, Zach is not here today. Grady did a day out. So with that said, moving into our budget update. As we're moving into budget season. Just right off the top, the governor, excuse me. The state voted in House 110, which is a reduction of felony drug crimes. So just that population that we won't be supervising is around twenty-five million. No more than twenty-five million a year statewide budget reduction. And the governor's recommended budget is about two hundred and forty-four million statewide for community corrections, which is down significantly from where it has been. But we've got some mirrors in the fire with a bill coming through to fund us for supervising domestic violence crimes, misdemeanor domestic violence crimes, a misdemeanor assault four, domestic violence, menacing domestic violence, and then also sex abuse three, which is a misdemeanor sex crime. Currently, right now, we supervise those cases. They're unfunded cases. But we, we work our magic to supervise those cases and provide services, sanctions, and supervision for them. So, moving on with that, there is a federal grant available that we had that just ended December thirty-first. It's a federal drug court grant that we will be applying for. I'm working on that, studying and gathering information so we can put it down. That would be five hundred thousand over the course of four years. So, twenty-five thousand dollars will help us out tremendously. It's an internal thing for our health and program, drug report. Training wise, this last year, I was notified that Rachel and I were non-compliant with our statewide certifications because of our supervisor management level training that we were, had neglected. No fault to us. The training academies were good about sending updates every month of what we need to finish where we're at in our training hours and how many hours we need to have accomplished before December thirty-first. But they haven't been real good, in my case, for eight years. And we know that need escapes until April. They told me they needed this training. So I was able to finish that up in November. It was a two-week course with a month in between each week, a lot of writing, a lot of reading, a lot of presentations. Rachel's class was the exact same way, in terms of the supervisor level academy. So we've finished those up and got our certifications in for those. Moving forward, we're looking to bring trauma-informed care training to the county. I'm working with the training academy and the regional training to bring that to us on an annual basis. Trauma-informed care is more than just day-to-day work in our field, whether law enforcement or community corrections. It's every aspect of life. There's always trauma running somewhere. We've been also working with Jay and Colin and our employing wellness to bring peer support programs with our office of law shootings, with divorcees, folks close to us in the community passing away, family-related issues. We don't really have a good, solid revenue AP, place assistance program and that's talking to someone on the phone, some stranger. You never know, for six sessions and then to that. Trying to bring something local that we can continue on and we have that local support, whether it's here with ourselves or someone from the hospital or someone from the Wellness Center. We're trying to create a peer support program more than, and add to our wellness programs. Currently, our wellness program is a fingerprint and you get your blood results and blood pressure and height and weight and maybe flexibility. Nothing more than that. So, trying to change that and add to that. So I'm working closely with the sheriff and we work with Jay and then Trace Wonzier from the Wellness Department. And I have a meeting I have for tomorrow to start the blood crime, dumping blood crimes. So that was kind of our ten-minute quick individual update. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you for coming in and giving that nice introduction and it just helps me out a little bit more. Helps me get up to speed a little bit better, so.
Well, as I said, it's easy for me to sit here and tell you what they do as opposed to them coming and sharing with you what they do. If you ever have any questions or want to go out with them in the community and see how they, what they do and all, everything, so. Feel free to.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Is it golden? It sounds like it.
Clean ones. Oh, I had them right here.
How's the crowd? Sorry, I tried to get the stick.
We're having a wellness community update.
You're next? Yeah, you're next. I have the two folks that work here, I'm not sure if they have some sort of or if they have something.
They're all good.
You ready?
Can I come to that? We're just here to, yeah, because I mean, you have Trace Paul.
For the presentation? Okay. You guys go ahead. Airport.
Well, currently, we're working on our Taxi Way Alpha project. I'll just start there because that's what we're actually working on. We're doing the scope of the work right now for the 2022 year. That's a real construction on that. But we're putting the scope of the work, getting it all together, the funding all together, make sure we have everything that we need to be able to do that project for 2022. And that's the Alpha Taxi Way project. And with that being said, and the C base has got, BLM C base has money that they're gonna redo their C base with. So we're trying to coordinate all one project with that and, you know, putting concrete up to the pavement. You know, it just goes hand in hand if we can do it all together. So you can coordinate, coordinating with them on that. And it works, so we're getting that put together. We got our Apron project, our Apron Beacon project, and then last fall, last fall, we finished it up. We got that all done with a little bit of a fight, I want to say. Pretty rough, it was probably one of the roughest projects we had as far as engineers, contractors and all that. We got through it, it's all done, looks really nice out there. So if you get a chance, go out there and look at it. You know, there's still work to be done, as I was saying with that out, with the Taxi Way project and stuff. And we had a little dilemma with our sewer, sewer last year. Coming to find out after the party was done, they removed our sewer line, our main sewer line, who are septic. And we didn't realize they'd done that until Tom was calling them saying, hey, we'll keep plugging up. Well, we did a little research and there's no sewer line anymore. So we're going, well, it's kind of way it plugs up, so. You know, first we didn't notice until it started getting busy. Summer came along and all of a sudden, you know, with the load of people coming through, it was like, oh. So, we got that all done. So things are moving forward out there. And then with the COVID thing, it kind of slowed us down. Got COVID for everything. So and I'll let Tom hit on like how his business is doing to some other things with the airport. Yeah, yeah, we got, along with the new sewer line. This last year, we got the new, the new emergency generator system put in. So that's worked out quite a few times already. We did a shutdown out there and all the lights will come on. The radio control for the landing lights and everything at night are all on it, so they all kick on and everything continues to function without having to jeopardize that safety. So that's worked out really well. We put in the new lawn there. We got a new lane sawed in front for the entrance there and kind of started dressing up that entrance. They've already hit on the other projects we did, so. But we put a new key lock system in with fuel.
It's still in the works.
Yeah, it's still in the works. We're waiting on electrician to get out there and actually get it done. So everything's sitting there, we just gotta. It was a little more complicated system than what they had originally said, so it's gonna involve an electrician to get it done. So, as soon as we get an electrician, we'll be more happy to have that thing upgraded. And then also, we have, what I'm thinking about, we upgraded our pump house. We kind of, they were just spread out. We put new pressure tanks in because the ones were decapitated. They're good, they're not decapitated. They're old, you know, they're just wore out from nineteen forty-three when they put the system in. So we put a whole new pressure system in and updated and we put a wall in and made it look better out there in the pump house. And that updates both our water and sewer system out there completely now. So, the way it was going about every other year, we were spending money to have somebody can dig up a line because it caved in or, you know, frequently we lose a whole bunch of water. So that whole system's upgraded now to where we don't have to. One less thing to deal with for a long time. So. Seventy years. Yeah. Long as it lasts six more years, that's all I care.
I hear that a lot, though. I'm starting to think it's not so much a joke anymore.
Oh, no, it's six years.
We do think that four years.
Everything just expires. Yeah. How many power lines just do you typically have throughout the year?
Out there, most of them are just spikes. We'll get ten, fifteen minutes, it'll go out. And then, the only time that's an issue, you know, if there's a storm and we got emergency services flying in.
Right, absolutely.
That fifteen minutes can be pretty critical. So, it's, but during the winter months, they don't happen often.
Yeah.
So what do you have that supplies your, what is it, propane or diesel?
It's a diesel.
And so how long can you run off of tank?
Seventy-two hours of that tank. It's amazingly efficient because they installed it. Trying to remember now, I don't remember what month it was, but it was last fall when they started installing that. And we're still on the same tank of fuel because it fires up once a week, does a self-test to make sure everything's good. And it's only down to three quarters of a tank, so it's pretty.
It's just.
It's a lot efficient that is. Yeah, well, the reason why I opt for diesel out there is because we can also, I have a setup so we can run jet fuel off there.
So if all else fails, everything goes crazy. And the one thing was, uh you know, worst case scenario, kind of a cascade event or something. There's no way to get fuel in and out, but you still run the place, so all we gotta do is pump off of our jet fuel uh tank out there and we can just continue to function, so. So that gives us that safety margin of if the whole world fell apart, we could still function a little bit anyhow, so.
All right, we're still open.
Yeah. So.
There are only two wells out there?
Yeah, just the one for service and then the one.
Which is now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
You know, B L M is proposing to take it down.
Yeah. Yeah, and that'd be good. But not the best ones in the world, so. I've got a filter system out there personally in the business, but people coming in during the summer months, we don't have bottled water available and we just had to is it three part filter system, so we filter any water that people want, so that kind of helps out. We don't have to use the the well for much more than flushing toilets and dealing with that kind of thing, so, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Um you guys got that whole lot and everything put back in. It looked really good last time I was out there, so.
Yeah, still some stuff we have to new chef on, but okay, not as far as the air well, just landscape.
Surrounding.
Right, and paving, where exactly are we out with that paving? You guys have some future paving projects that you're kind of looking at?
Just the taxiway.
Just the taxiway?
Yeah, that's the taxiway off is the south taxiway right for the B L M and the.
Just spread around that side, yeah.
And what we did, because this year was actually slotted for the new parallel taxiway off to East here. Um because you've got your runway and then there was a parallel taxiway that ran the full distance, so we're gonna start off. And they were gonna do twenty one, twenty two, they were gonna do the uh half of that, so about twenty two hundred meters off. Um but when we got the new engineers in, they looked at the quality of that taxiway. And they said, this is to the point where by twenty twenty five, it's gonna be gravel basically. And uh we didn't have state money to finish going back and sealing what was there, so they figured by twenty twenty three, that was all gonna be failed. And and then at that point, the state won't put any money into it. Once it's failed, it's just done and it's up to the county to figure out how to get that done. And that that would cut people off from the new parking that we just spent almost three million dollars on and all the fuel, all that stuff. If if that got wiped out, that was just gonna totally shut things down out there. So we shifted gears, we got the F V A on board because they weren't real happy with changing the plans that we had in place. But uh but they've managed to to come around and see that, yeah, you're right, that stuff's not good. So we we just shifted gears and are going to make sure that that infrastructure that we really need is is done before we go expanding any other uh pavement out there.
Okay, so. Are you gonna be regrind, are you gonna be grinding any of it back up or is it just overlay right over the top?
Oh, it'll be ground. Yeah, it's gonna be a total regrind and uh they're getting, we're gonna have to change because right now that was originally sloped in in this southern direction, so all the runoff on the taxiway ran to the drains to the south, but the F V A's changed requirements, so we're gonna crown that now, so it'll drain from both sides. So it's gonna be, there'll be some pretty significant, even the uh basin and everything's gonna change uh underneath that pavement, so it'll be a pretty good reconstruction on that. And then uh we'll do it in two for sure, possibly three phases to keep them closing, you know, sections of the whole taxiway down at the same time, so there'll always be a way for aircraft to get in the fuel. Um we'll probably do the the west side first so that by the time fire season really hits, the the floor service B L M have got the ability to get their fire uh aircraft and stuff out to the runway without them. You know, if you do so. So we're trying to dig through as much as we can there.
Yeah.
Make it safe, but make it functional.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So you want to tell us a little bit about your personal job, your personal business out there?
Well, I've got less hair than I used to have, so. Um no, it's it's been going pretty good, actually. This this last season was fortunate for us that the fire season was pretty busy because uh with the COVID especially, there was a timing there. There was two months where there was no customers in the shop whatsoever because the general aviation stuff just stopped. So so fortunately, I was able to go out and kind of subsidize that. Keep somebody in the shop that wasn't uh, you know, at the airport that wasn't a mechanic, but at least we had somebody that knew a fuel and that kind of stuff. And I went out and spent quite a bit of summer out on the fire just because that kept us, it kept us alive. But uh we're working on a couple more helicopter contracts right now to bring in the build. Trying to focus more on maybe your full time, not not going out ever again. That was my goal this year and it was supposed to happen, there was too many changes, so. But so we're we're definitely, we're growing in a good direction as far as getting aircraft based here and also bringing in more stuff from Boise and and uh Northern California, over in Medford. Drawn quite a few customers, so um that's working good. We're seeing a big uptick right now in um in the off field aircraft stuff. I mean, people wanting to fly out to the Albor Desert and just land out in the desert camp. They want to fly. Clearing to to Idaho and this is a good spot, so. Um hopefully this next year, that's another thing I want to focus on, see what we can do with um that grass strip out there because we're um it's not an official grass strip, but there's a strip that people have all the time. It's in the dirt and if they've got a spot where these guys coming through, they the expensive tires and stuff that they put on to go off field. Hey, but it rips them up, so they'll prefer to land. Um you know, out in the middle of the, in the sagebrush, but if we got a good s- grass strip, it really we've been seeing a a big uptick in fuel sales and stuff just from those aircraft coming in. And if they're trying to let them know when they do come in, hey, just land on the, land out there in the dirt, you guys are welcome to do that, so.
Yeah.
Kind of hoping we can do a little bit to make it a little more obvious that there is a spot for them to land out there and then give them a, give them a place, even there's room to set up a tent out there if they want it without being a safety issue. So that uh that seems to be kind of the new, the new growing industry right now with the general aviation is. Guys are done dealing with the airport, they just want to go out for camping. Land out in the middle of nowhere if they can, go hunting, fishing, whatever, so. So I'm gonna try to put a little more emphasis on giving some advertisement towards that to try to draw people in. Um well, I'll I'll put together a uh a video coming in before too long. Just kind of give you guys that they can kind of show you what what they're doing and what we're thinking about. So we can, and that'll help both, you know, fuel sales and and people coming into the county as well as, you know, they come in. They go out there and they bang up the airplane, if that's what they need to get fixed, so. So it works good.
Do you know, is there any hangers for sale?
We we actually have more aircraft on the field right now than we have hangers now.
Okay.
There's there's one hanger for sale. It's been for sale for a long time and it's it's just got some outdated stuff and a lot of people just don't want it, so. But other than that, we've actually got two hangers that have got three airplanes because we're out there. And uh I've got three people right now that um if their aircraft could be based elsewhere that are coming in here because there's just, there is nothing available, so they're in the cloud, they're out there right now. So we're at a point where um we need to start trying to figure out how to put in some more hangers. Whether it's a community hanger that's big enough to hold a, you know, the Pilatus or something if they get in here in a storm during the, you know, to support Airlink or or whoever's coming in, or if we're gonna do like eight individual hangers, but we're at that point where the growth is there and uh we need to start thinking about what our next move is there. Um because it's uh it's happening. I mean, we've got, even with the flight school, we put three new airplanes on the field just from the having the flight school there. We've now got a full time instructor that's staying here seven days a week for probably the next three or four months. And if things go well and he likes, you know, out what he's making, then there's a lot of potential for for probably five or six more airplanes. And at that point, you know, we're we're really stuck because we don't have any place to put. Uh I've got uh, we've got one guy right now that's looking to buy one, but he keeps dragging his feet because he's got nowhere to put it, so. So that's something that I think that's gonna be our next spot, making the airport grow as far as the population and functionality is, is putting up the buildings to protect the aircraft.
That was an extra good quality.
Yeah, yeah, because we don't have the option over here tying them down throughout the winter. It just the wind and the and the weather just, it just destroys the aircraft, but but um.
It was a nice one yesterday.
Yeah, that was pretty good. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Or the gentleman up in Summer Lake, yeah, always had his plane parked up on the hill, had it anchored down and everything, did it successfully for about three, four years in a row.
Yeah.
And then one year, we just had one of those windstorms that came through and scared the living daylights out of everyone. So you're in a house, you know, new built house and it's just shaking the foundation. And uh came out and the whole plane was flipped all the way up over once.
Yeah.
On the side, completely bent the wings over, yeah, happens.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
That aluminum is not very thick and it, you know, or the fabric's even worse, you know, it's just.
You gotta have them both of that.
It's just, it's rough, but. But uh.
Another thing that breaks up is our fuel prices are generally lower than everywhere else too, so.
Yeah, we we've kind of tried hard to keep the fuel prices low for people in and especially the jet fuel, that's where, you know, our best profit is, but you know, people go in and I've had people that are from Reno and they won't hop off of Reno, they'll land here on their way to Seattle. And one guy especially, but it's two dollars a gallon cheaper than than Reno because there's so much demand that they just put the price up and that's where it is, but. So getting some of that light corporate traffic has been, it's been nice because we can we we keep a little bit of jet fuel going throughout the year and trickling in. Yeah, and then, you know, even we get quite a few guys from Klein Falls coming over just to fly, they give them an excuse to fly, they'll come over and get cheaper fuel and fly back home because they can do it and it's pretty close, so.
Success.
Yeah.
How many uh students are in the flight school?
Right now, we've got four.
Four.
Uh huh, and our biggest, our biggest thing, we had eight to ten people requesting to learn to fly. But the biggest problem is instructor, our original instructor, he can only come over one, two days a week at the most. So it was really kind of discouraging to the students even because they would get started and now all of a sudden he couldn't come for a week and he'd be or or two or however, and they're they're behind. So having this younger guy here that's that's a full time instructor, he's he's hungry to teach, he's hungry to fly, so. Um if he continues to to produce uh one of these three or four people we've got right now, then then we'll start hitting hard and try to get the others back into the field committing to it because that's, if they push hard eight to ten weeks, they can have their license done, so. It'll be, that'll be, that would be good for everybody. Hopefully more airplanes and more pilots out there rejuvenate the the whole uh aviation group out there because it's just, it's just, it's right at that point where, you know, you've got you've got field of pilots, they're going out there forever, but as they start to either hell wise, just quit flying. It it just leaves the airplane sitting there with
Right.
With nobody functioning, so I'm glad to see these eighteen to twenty five year old students coming out and really wanting to dive into it. Keep things plugging in out there.
Yeah, good deal. Appreciate what you're doing out there.
Look, I feel like there's opportunity, you know, in the future if we ever come into some money or come into some grants, you know, potentially build a hanger or something. And the the pilot school, I think, is great. You got a good thing going out there, so.
Yeah, thank you. It's uh it's a little stressful getting things, well, you know, you think I could say, just just getting started, but it seems like after seven years, that's where we're still at, just just got started and kind of heading up the hill, you know? But uh, but yeah, no, we we appreciate the opportunity too. It's been, it's been really a good thing for everybody, I think. To find some stability and, you know, people around and start to see that, yeah, we can, we can count on what's going on out there and and they're actually coming in, so I'm glad to see that, so.
I know my nephew enjoys it.
Yeah, 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 him and I have been having fun out there around the edge of Goose Lake and just going out to Albor and playing. We were pretty excited this last weekend. We did uh put some heavy down, larger tires on his airplane so he can get off field and actually land in the grass and stuff. He was having a lot of fun with that, so it's good to see that, yeah.
So as a county, how can we help you get that grass strip? What what do we need to do for some of that?
Ideally, I mean, it's not a lot, but I think if we if we get to later in the spring when it's actually um drying up, we can find a way to grade that and knock the tops off because there's years and years of salt grass and sage. Sage is pretty much blown off because Kelly Beal, almost every year, goes out there with his tractor and brush brush hog and cleans that just because he likes to use it. But it would really be nice to be able to knock the top off of that, throw some new seed down, so there's actually a good functional um strip out there where people can build, like, hey, that's a good spot for us to build. And and the rest of it's simple, I mean, in the corners, the four corners of the strip is just some rock with some white marker paint, you know, so that they can see, hey, we can go in there. The only thing we can't do, I mean, I'm not saying we can't, but we, I think it will change our insurance policy is making an official strip where we advertise it as a dirt strip because then our liability goes up to account. But if it's there for them to use, that's how it's always been.
Their discretion.
Yeah, it's in their discretion, so if they want to land there, the markings are there and they can see it, then they're, oh, okay, we'll just use it. And then when I put the little presentation together, I'll show you guys how Idaho's doing it. Idaho's killing it. I mean, they're, the Idaho Aviation, uh the State Aviation Board has just really done a good job of keeping all their old, their their outback uh strips and clear up in the French church wherever this area is. Some of those spots, that's the only way in and out and it's just, but they just keep those strips nice enough that people want to go and it becomes a it like um Johnson Creek and some of those, it it's a yearly thing where there's there's a hundred airlines that just show up just to be there and uh but if we make it convenient here, a lot of those aircraft from the west going out there, they'll stop here and actually come into town and buy groceries and everything else that can't go out there. Try to try to boost that because it's really, it's really taken off. Um they started flying in uh down close to Pyramid Lake. It's started out, I think it's in ten, eleven years, goes something like that. And it's gotten to forty nine where they've had to restrict the amount of aircraft, so every summer they get four hundred and fifty aircraft that land in the middle of the that dry lake bed out there and and they just camp out and for three or four days they just play. But that's how big that community's getting. It's getting so big all over um the west coast that it really it's it's really taken off, so be good to be a part of that. Well, it's still up and running, you know? The people are really got an interest in it.
That gives a different view of economic development here and tourism here.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's a nice, that's a strength for us, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're right on the edge of that, uh we're right on the edge of, we're a perfect hub, you know? People traveling from Medford or Reno or whatever, they're coming up this direction a lot of time and then they're breaking and going over to Reno or to to Boise and then from there out into the out into the states and in Idaho, but but we've, we've seen a continual growth in seven years, people coming in. That first, first year we were here, there was four or five airplanes in this one club that would come in. Last year, there was seventy airplanes and thirty four of them stopped here for fuel, so um you know, more convenient, we make it, more we're gonna get, so. That's uh, that's pretty good, seven years to see that kind of growth. Seventy airplanes at a time, that's a pretty good fact. 70 airplanes at a time, that's a pretty good, that, it's a pretty big boost, so, so.
Hey Tom, so where's that airstrip at? Have you set it up there?
Out in the desert?
Oh, that's just, I don't know, Elmore Desert. We just land out there, it's just so flat and.
I didn't, I didn't hear the location where it was, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so that's, that's become a big popular spot, but it's fairly close and it's an hour away by air. And the people go out there all the time and hang out and then take off and go right on into, to Idaho from there, so. We'll, uh, at some point we probably could, I'd like to see if we can figure out some, some kind of advertisement. We'll get, I'll get some promotional stuff together, what aviation stuff is doing. So if they can see it, then maybe we can brainstorm and get some kind of a, a economic development, uh, advertisement or something to show. You know, hey, this is what capable of, kind of promote that a little bit. Because it's, it's growing without promoting it, but I think it would really grow. Because there's a lot of people coming in, they go, we had no idea we could land up in the, on the grass strip.
Right.
They just didn't know it was there.
Yeah.
So, it would be good to.
No, that sounds really good.
Yeah, it's just the problem, like she was grading it, is that soil out there blows so bad that the grass comes off.
Yeah.
So we need to think about that, but.
Yeah.
Probably salt grass is about the only thing that will grow there.
Yeah.
But once you get it knocked down, you just go there and roll it.
Well, we. We actually rolled it three times this year. We landed two, we got a rain and rolled it, compacted it, and it helped. You know, we got rid of the bagger holes and stuff because that was the biggest issue. You get the tail of an aircraft in a bagger hole or a main rail, it's going to ruin your day, so.
Well, that's, that was, I watched that one guy land out there and come down, you hear him pretty soon he's like this.
Oh, here it goes.
Got it down.
And, yeah, and even with the, the flight school, that's one more thing we can, you know, we can teach students. You know, if you have off airport landings, which eventually they have, you know, you lose an engine or something's going wrong, you've got to land somewhere. You teach them in the middle of the field how to land without ruining the airplane. They've got some more mental choices to make and they're a safer pilot in all of them, so. You know, that's, that would help too, just to have that for, for training them, so.
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of potential.
Is there any other questions here? It's awesome, sounds good, Tom.
Okay, thanks again.
I'll give you a holler this week.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here with this one for sure. I think I got all my handling stuff done, so. All right, thanks, Tom.
All right, Charlie, what do you listen on that?
Yeah, I got a meeting at 10:15.
See, we'll get, you'll have eight minutes.
Commissioners, veterans services. Uh, what we do basically is assess veterans and their families on their federal, state, city benefits. And so to start at the top, let's talk about Oregon. Oregon has approximately 297,039 veterans, which includes 10,000 World War II veterans. Which you wouldn't think that we'd have that much, but we do, we have a lot, yeah. Uh, 20,000 Korean War veterans, over 100,000 Vietnam era veterans, so that's both in there. And that's because if, anytime it's a war era, their, the whole family is entitled some form of benefits if qualified. 100,000 plus Persian Gulf, a lot of them that were in between the times, which would be the peacetime. Between Vietnam and 1990 when we started the war back at the end. Um, approximately 75% of Oregon's veterans are over the age of 50 and close to 50% are over the age of 70. Lake County has approximately 780 veterans. We just got this new thing on our database, new database, where we can actually start looking at what we have for conflict, conflict veterans, which. We have zero World War II, World War I, we have 53 World War II, 68 Korean veterans, 291 Vietnam veterans. Operation Endurance Freedom is 15. Operation Iraqi Freedom 21, Gulf War 73, Persian Gulf 18, Peacetime 150. The other and non-applicable ones are ones that we're still trying to get paperwork for to find out, you know, what conflict they were in, thicker than, thicker than any one of these. So since the last budget, um, we've had a huge increase. So Lake County itself, in 19, or in 2012, when I first started, we had 933 veterans. Now, as of FY19, we have 780. Total expenditures, what the total expenditures are, are the compensation pension, construction, education, vocational rehabilitation, employment. Loan guarantee, general operating expenses, insurance, insurances and indemnities, medical care and unique patients. From 2012, we were at 3.8 million and now we're at 11.4 million. Just in, uh, compensation pensions, money's in their pocket for their disabilities, we went from 3.6 million to 6.8 million in Lake County. Which is huge. Makes you wonder what they did before 2012, and we can't capture that. So anyways, that's all because of training and training's really important. And we push it for all the, um, veteran service officers in, in Oregon, is to do the training. Because all this training is helping us get these veterans that deserve more than what they're getting now. And this last training year, we've done state conference, national conference and rural training, all virtual. It's very hard to do virtual. The reason is, and I can even see it myself, is that people get on there, they see all these hundreds of people on the computer. And they're looking at themselves and not looking at the training. They're combing their hair, they're fixing their shirt. So they're, they're, we're going to start working on some new kind of training to where people aren't focused on how they look, but actually focusing on the training. Some of the challenges that we have, we have quite a few. We have a lot of new stuff that came down the pipeline, such as the Navy veterans on Agent Orange that are now not Blue Water, but they can serve Black Water or Brown Water. And that's because the way they look at it is the erosion from Vietnam into the ocean. That ship was on top of that erosion spot that was in the middle of the ocean, that is now Agent Orange. So all these veterans that were in the Navy, that were on those ships that were declined or denied benefits in the past, we are now looking for them. We're hoping VA helps out by sending them notifications for having them come to our office and have us do the claims for them. If they've already passed away, we'll be doing DIC claims, which are indemnity claims to help the spouses. If they did die of a service-connected disability under Agent Orange, we will have to try to find those spouses and get them their benefits set that they deserve. Because their husbands passed away of a service-connected disability. The other one is that they added smorgasbord to Agent Orange. They added bladder cancer, hypothyroidism and Parkinson's, which is four to the, parts to four parts. So if you can have either one of those, anytime that you have that, you automatically get the claim. Hypertension did not make the claim this year. We were hoping it did, it didn't. So some of the trainings that we did do this year is we did pension, home care, hospice, VA billing, suicide prevention, VA debt benefits. Gulf War illness claims, PTSD, heart condition, medical examinations and opinions. State and local resources, webinars, understanding VA deals and legacy confirmation, secondary service connection claims. New changes to VA non-service connection disability pension programs. VA benefits for disabilities caused by VA health care, Section 151 claim. What that is, is like a veteran goes into a VA hospital and the city that counts the long leg. So that's actually a VA claim, so it's, it's, it's just one of those claims you never want to hear, but we've had quite a few already, unfortunately. So notice update on Lake County is that Lake County is currently assisting 18% of our women veterans accessing benefits. This is 10% above the state average. Lake County is currently helping 36.56% ages 17 to 44 access benefits. This is 13% above the state average. Lake County is currently helping 36.62% of the veterans age 45 to 64 access benefits, which is 8.12% above the state average. Despite the fact that the overall population is lower by 6%. Lake County is helping 38.35% of veterans age 65 and over access benefits, which is 27% state, state average. So the Veteran Services Grant, receiving funding from lottery revenues as authorized by Measure 96, was approved in 2016. For 35,000 to 70,000 per biennium. Well, since then, we've reached a reduction of, I believe it was like 8%. We can work with that, but we understand there's going to be another cutback between, um, but it depends on the director and Salem and what she does. And she's going to fight for it, there's some money in the fundings, but we have a feeling there's going to be another cutback. It could hurt us a little bit on some of the things that we have, um, this money's diggits to purchase a vehicle. I do have an admin system, which is very helpful, when I want to do on-call stuff or go to somebody's home, I have somebody in the office. County Suicide Awareness Grants, as you know, we did, um, we did that thing over at the Women's Center or the Recovery Center. And it was very successful. We found a decline on suicides or attempt suicides. Without having it this last year, we've had a few attempts and I believe one suicide. So I brought that up to Salem and they're looking at us possibly getting some more grant money to do that again. So I will apply. It'd be between $3,000 and $5,000. And maybe we can do another successful event with our local partners and, and that'll help.
So just to give Barry kind of an update on that. Like, it's kind of like a picnic type thing and then they bring in counselors, they bring in virtually every organization partnering with you.
Between veterans and civilians, trying to get them to work together.
Yeah, and want the commissioners to go over and just like help him cook or eat food. Yeah, or eat, you know, just to be a presence there and, you know, whenever Charlie needs, you know, we can help him that way, yeah.
Works out really good that way. Because three, if you think about it, 3,000 really isn't that much money to do an event like that. And hospital, sometimes it's tough to get hospitals to fork out a little bit to help and. Last year we were fortunate with them, this year I don't know what they're going to be able to do. But I will be putting in for that grant again for this year. And hopefully it'll be another successful event. If, if we still have COVID going through and we can't do an event like that, then we're going to look at, we're going to look outside the box on other ways that we can do something. Uh, either a takeout type barbecue thing, um, we should like to see the kids get involved and, uh, have them have some fun, but with COVID, you know, what we're going to do. This COVID's really put a, put a damper on a lot of things. Um, one of the other challenges we have is we have approximately, I think there's like over 300,000 cases right now that have been processed for veterans benefits. I think in my filing cabinet, I probably have over 50 and over a year, year old now. The VA is touching some of those. Let's say I have five claims on one person to be backed, but neck, bilateral hearing loss. What they've been doing is that they're pushing out these claims, saying, we're going to give them hearing loss. They give this hearing loss, they say they got 10%, 190 bucks a month. And then they forget that there's other parts to those claims. So our job is in this challenge is to go back to all these files that they did approve on a claim. And find out why they didn't go back in over a year and check these others out. Because now they're thinking, oh, hey, we'll forget about them, well, they don't get their retroactive pay for doing the claim. So that's another big problem that we have. Um, we're still getting into those VDA hearings now, uh, we've just started again, we've done four in the last two weeks. And we've got two, possibly three this next month. And these are the claims that these people have been waiting from one to five years on. And, and this is other counties too, particularly if they're sick and they can't, you know, be part of this. Then we will go help them invite them to go to the county, back to the climate, uh, Carney County. Uh, I will do that to, you know, help those people on those VDA claims. Because a lot of these people are going in front of the VDA judges, they're nervous. And what we want to do is sit there with them and get them comfortable about these claims. Because we know that, we know, because we're the ones that did these claims, that these are benefits that they deserve. So we don't want them to sit in front of the judge and go blank. We're, we're going to sit there and just try to make them comfortable and, and, you know, say what we need to do to get them talking again to the judges and walk through it and walk through them.
Right, right.
And, and that's a difficult process, it really is. Because they'll go blank, they'll see somebody that's like, you know, being a movie star and you can't say a word. And what we try to do is we'll start a conversation on like, you know, what happened, you know, at this time, on this date. And try to focus on one thing, not what happened at home with the kids or anything, but focus on just on that, that federal benefit that they deserve. So, yeah, we've got a lot of challenges going on and that's all virtual right now. Um, we're about 14 months out for anybody to go and actually go to the foreman and see a judge face to face. This is all, everything's done on virtual.
So speaking of virtual, how is that, you know, we talked earlier about that virtual counseling?
Right.
Has that taken off or?
We've just started working that again, um, because we have the mission act of community care. We can actually have them go over to, uh, mental health, they have a big computer system and they have people they can talk back and forth. If I do apply for this grant and we can't do an event like that, I'll be asking for two computers, like, um, Chromebooks. Where they can actually have a Chromebook in front of them without being, people are looking at them saying, hey, what's in this room? Hey, this guy's got mental health pop. That's the problem we have in rural communities, which technically we're front here and people talk and we don't want that to happen. So that's one of the focuses and part in that grant is if we can do that, we'll have some tools that we can use. The challenge to that is where can we use the tools because of HIPAA? We have to build in a different room, we have to leave my office so they can sit in there, which I don't think is a good idea. There are some tools in there that we need to start working with that, you know, I think are positive things for veteran services. If we get like a room built, a nice quiet room, have a computer system in there, they can do the one-on-one on virtual, I think that'd be fantastic. But right now we just don't have the room.
We have this little room, maybe we.
I don't think this is HIPAA approved though. I think people can still hear out of that room when they're talking. That's the problem we're going to have. People compete in the windows, we'll have to figure out how to close them up. We just have to think of the HIPAA rules.
Alrighty, um, I think you have a scheduled appointment and, uh, we have a timed item that we're a little.
Okay, any questions? If you have any questions, yeah, just call, yeah, I can, in fact, I can do this again some other time if you have more questions. So long, thanks.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks for all you did.
Thanks.
Hope you hang in there.
Um, good morning Francie, I see we've got you online.
Okay, so can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, there you are.
Okay, and I think, I think that Melanie has like, hear my screen.
Uh, yeah, we, we do see, um, your screen, uh.
Okay.
Thank you, and I apologize for being a few moments late, no worries.
No, 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 apologize at all.
Alright, thank you.
Um, I'm looking at how easy or hard it is to change my screen on your system. Okay, okay, we'll try it now. Alright, so I'm Francie Winters, I'm your prevention coordinator, uh, for Lake County covering, uh, covering the county for, under Lake Health District. Um, most of you know me, but I, I know that there, there's a, someone in the room that doesn't. Um, so I want you to look at this, um, boot image here for a minute. Um, we're going to talk about harm reduction and, um, I'm going to give you some history and, uh, some background. And, you know, maybe look at some solutions anyway. Uh, hopefully, um, you'll, you'll, you'll understand better about how opioids have, have functioned and what their, the challenges are right now. So when you look at this picture, what's going through your head? Idiot? Hmm, city slicker? What a waste of a good pair of boots? So how many people in our community do you think would recognize this boot as like useless? A misguided attempt by someone who doesn't understand the purpose of a good solid boot, which is protection? No one could think that this boot would protect them from anything. Why? Because it has a big hole in it, right where we need protection. So Lake Health District has been chosen for funding as part of a national harm reduction project. To figure out if, like, we have holes in our community boot around opioid use. And, and what we can potentially do to protect ourselves and our neighbors. So let me give you a brief story. I'm one of the local chronic pain self-management facilitators here, and we see some amazingly resilient people living with chronic pain in Lake County. One older man comes to mind. Excuse me. He's sort of a poster child, but an adult. And he's a kind of a gentleman cowboy and a man of few words. And he's been doing ranch work since he was, like, knee-high to a grasshopper. But he still gets up before dawn seven days a week to help his neighbor feed his livestock. That's just the kind of man he is. But a lifetime of hard work, accidents, wear and tear, you know, getting kicked, getting your muscles sprained or pulled, hauling and lifting things that are, you know, fine when you're a young person, but as you get older, maybe, maybe we shouldn't be lifting them anymore, but, you know, still, we do it because if you don't, who's gonna do it? And there's no one else. So our gentleman cowboy, his body hurts. His back hurts every day. So let's say, back in like two thousand-something, our aging friend's doctor with good intentions and the medical understanding of the time prescribed a painkiller that was hailed as a deal breaker for those with chronic pain. Probably OxyContin, but it could have been any opiate-based pain reliever. And the idea was that patients could live entirely pain-free. And despite some alarming spikes in overdoses in the mid-two thousands, thanks to successful misinformation campaigns and some sketchy research by pharmaceutical companies, opiates kept their reputation as the best answer for folk with chronic pain. Some patients may have voiced concerns about taking opiates, if they even realized that's what they were doing. But they were assured, as were their doctors, that if these medications were being taken for legitimate pain, people could not become addicted or physically dependent. We now know that the pharmaceutical companies lied to our doctors, to the FDA, to all of us. And our communities are now tasked with picking up the pieces of the broken lives left in the wake of this focus on profit over ethics. Charlie kind of talked about this. Overdose deaths are on the rise. Oregon saw an increase of over forty percent from twenty nineteen to the first half of twenty twenty. And Charlie didn't talk about it as, as opioids, but he talked about it as suicide, and we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute because there's a direct correlation between opioid use and suicide. So does anyone know what Lake County's prescription rate was in, like, the two twenty fifteen time period at the height of the opioid crisis?
Wasn't it like high, more of the highest in the nation?
Um, I'm not about the nation, but we certainly were, like, one of the highest in the state. So here's what the figures are. They were prescriptions, we reached three hundred and ninety-two people per one thousand of the population. And that's nearly one in four, or, as you can see here, thirty-five opioid pills for every man, woman, and child in our county. Our county was among the highest prescribers in the state. And then, a little bit later, twenty sixteen-ish, Oregon decided, no more opioids for back pain. And they just said, "We're not gonna do that anymore," and they pulled them completely. People were suddenly cut off. Well, obviously, they had various, they protested and, and said, "We need our, our painkillers." And they might have been told that they were physically dependent and they're gonna be tapered off, which means gradually reducing their dosage, or they may have actually been told that they were addicted. Either way, they might have heard addicted. Imagine how they felt. Infuriated, embarrassed, betrayed. They were promised that this wouldn't happen to them, and now they're being told that they're addicted. And it was realized at the upper levels of the state that, you know, an abrupt moratorium on opioids for back pain was probably not the best way to handle this. And there was some backpedaling. So high levels of opioids are still available for dire cases, for cancer, end-of-life, and, and many for, many of our elderly. Tapering is just not a good answer for everyone. It is an answer for some people. But let me explain in general terms, like layman's terms. Physical dependence means your body is becoming used to the drug. And if you stop, you're going to have symptoms of withdrawal, shaking, sweats. You know, your, your brain is chemically gonna be telling you it needs the drug. But addiction requires a formal diagnosis by a drug and alcohol counselor and a determination that that person is continuing to take the drug despite experiencing negative consequences. And, and there are guidelines about what negative consequences means. The thing I'd like you to really understand and remember about opioids is that while they may be useful for short-term acute pain, like, you know, a knee surgery, taken long-term, they actually reduce a person's pain tolerance. They, they are more sensitive to pain because of taking opioids. Their perception of their pain is greater, and the drug builds tolerance, meaning that a person needs a higher dose over time to get the same level of pain reduction. So you can see in a long-term patient that why they're so insistent that they need their prescription, because it, it, that's how it feels, and stopping is not easy. And stopping without help, oh my gosh, right? That would be really hard. But consider this. Some taking opiates for a long time can be taking a legally prescribed dose, prescribed dose, that could kill the average non-user who's not built up that tolerance. For people taking high doses, it's like this dance on the head of a pin. They need this level of dose to relieve their pain now because they've been taking so long. But if they take anymore, they can overdose. Heaven forbid Grandma forgets that she took her pill and takes a second pill. Has anyone seen these ads lock it up? You see this one here? He gets his music online, his T-shirts in the mail, and his drugs from his uncle's medicine cabinet. So I just wanna say, okay, so where do most people keep their medicine? In their medicine cabinet, correct. And in Lake County, what is more common? One bathroom or two bathrooms in a house? Well, pretty much two. I mean, sorry, one. Pretty much, we have one bathroom in houses mostly. So if Grandma has guests over, grandkids, friends, somebody helps out around the house or in the yard, they probably have access to her opioids. We did a survey, the R-Corps survey, and on it, five percent of our folks locked up their prescription drugs. So there's that. Now, if you're not actually using them, you know, you can get rid of them by taking them to a, a drug take-back event. The DEA has two of those a year they sponsor. We have participated in some years past, but it's been a while because law enforcement just simply hasn't had the ability to have someone there with us the whole time, and obviously, if people are gonna be taking drug, prescription drugs and dropping them in a box there, you, you don't wanna leave me or somebody like me alone. That you have to have law enforcement. But we do fortunately have, uh, the Lake Health District has a permanent box in their entry, and that's good. The, in Northlake, we don't have anybody that's willing to house that box like that. Lapine has, the clinic has a, a box in Lapine, but they won't do one in Northlake. We have got a workaround where we can do a, pretty soon, it hasn't gone into effect yet, but where we'll be able to do a, a mail-out service that, that will just give them envelopes from the Wellness Center and Recovery, and they'll be able to mail them out without paying any money, and, and, and it's in partnership with a nonprofit. So we're working on that piece, where we get rid of them. But the presence of high doses of opioids in our community is, is a risk. It, it is definitely something that we want to become aware of and try to reduce the risk as much as possible. And so one of the things that, as I said, I'd come back to, let me pull this up here. So there's a direct correlation between opioid use and suicide. Obviously, when they have higher doses, it, it, there's an increased risk by accident or not, because it's so right there. And like with alcohol or anything else, there's this kind of sense of, you know, less inhibition and, and increased impulsivity, you know? We just like, more impulsive, and, and, and so that increases it as well. And, and then there's other pieces that, that people share. Here's one that shows us the commonality between opioid abuse and suicidality. The physical health problems. You know, "I feel so bad. I hurt all the time. I don't see it getting any better. I just feel like I want to give up." Behavioral health problems, depression, things like that. Trauma in our background, adverse childhood experiences. I, you know, "I grew up in a difficult family. There was a lot of violence in the home." Things like that, that, that changes the way that we can move forward in our lives. And social isolation, which, my gosh, look at COVID and social isolation and all that's done for us. So all of those things make it harder for us to deal with this opioid issue and make it harder for our folks. So pharmaceutical companies and those that pay fun to speak for them, they worked really hard to demonize addicts as criminals instead of recognizing addiction as a disease, which it is. Well, at the same time, they use lies to keep the practice of prescribing opioids in place despite the evidence showing that they weren't effective for long-term use. In fact, Purdue, the family-run pharmaceutical company that makes OxyContin, they had a plan to pay insurance companies thousands of dollars to have every patient who became addicted or overdosed on their problem, or on their product. That didn't actually happen, but they had a plan to do that. It came out in, when they were in court. They did actually succeed in a plan to have their product put on those digital handheld devices that are so popular now in clinics by name. They had it put right up there at the top of the list. So that worked out really well for them. They made a lot of money out of that. And, and, but they're not the only business people using marketing to their advantage and to our disadvantage. So a little background is necessary here. Between two thousand and eight and twenty-ten, a person might spend as much as eighty dollars on a single OxyContin pill in the, on the illegal market. Now, before we get all judgy, buyers might include a high school or a college student who was given opioids to extract their wisdom tea and then found that it reduced their stress, or they got physically dependent on it, or whatever, because remember, it can happen in three to five days. But the rise of opioid prescriptions, they were everywhere. Hydrocodone, OxyContin, they were everywhere, and anyone could become dependent. Businessmen, carpenters, soccer mops, and lots of people were just, were prescribed opiates. I mean, there's stuff going through the courts now. You know, Walmart's being asked about their, their protocols and all that. So I actually knew someone who was offered opioids for their twelve-year-old daughter because she had a tooth taken out. And, and so it was, it was everywhere. So, and, and a lot of people, you know, can say, "Well, I'm out, and, you know, I can't get it right now." But somebody knew somebody, and they could, they could get them more pills, and, and that's kind of what happened. But those are legitimate pills. Now, let's talk about fentanyl. So fentanyl is chemically made, and so it's a chemically-made opioid. It was primarily used in the medical profession for open-heart surgery. And also for a while, it was used as a slow-release pain reliever in a patch form. I, I don't think that's happening too much because it, it's so physically dependent and addictive. So it's also super cheap, and it's really easy to mail. So you can see here, this little baggie, a little gallon baggie, costs a couple thousand dollars to buy that fentanyl, usually from China. Out of it, they can make a million dollars worth of product. If that were heroin instead of fentanyl, they'd make eighty thousand. Well, you know, for us hard-working folk, that sounds like, either one of them sounds like a ton of money. But you can see how seductive it is, right? So fentanyl has absolutely flooded the US market, not just by itself, but as an additive that made other street drugs more addicted and potent, often unknown to the person who was buying. And then they got created, the illegal drug book. They decided, they made a pill press and molds. So they can now make pills that look exactly like the ones you get on a prescription, but they're not, and they have fentanyl in them. And this makes it very, very easy to overdose. And in our county, something like fifty-nine percent of our people, it might be fifty-four, no, it's fifty-nine percent, say that they got their pain relievers from a friend or a relative, even though seventy percent of them believed it was wrong to share. So quick development of dependency, a crackdown on opioid prescriptions. Lots of regular folk introduced to legal opiates that aren't available, super-cheap alternative. Opioids, opioids don't care if you're the president of the debate team, or if you're a a kid at a party, you know, that's pressured into doing something for the first time, or if you're Grandma or Great Aunt Hattie with debilitating arthritis. Harm reduction is about saving lives, and this situation is ever-changing. After President Trump pressured China to stop letting its chemical labs export fentanyl to the United States, the manufacturers shifted to selling the chemicals before they were combined to make fentanyl. So one step away from being fentanyl. So they export them. In many cases, it's not even illegal to sell them in this form. They're then put together in Mexico, or sometimes Canada, mostly Mexico. Mostly, it's the cartels that are shipping them into our country. So that's how they've gotten around that, and that's where it's mostly coming from now. There's even a new chemical compound hitting the markets, and it's so new that it's not even illegal yet. We, we don't have an, an alternative to get rid of it, like we have with naloxone to prevent overdose. We, we don't have any of those things. We just know that it's, it's, it's out there and it's coming. One of the programs that we have on this new harm reduction grant is to look at, at what is currently going on, how we currently handle overdoses across the county, and then what we can do. And one of the things that they're doing in some of our other counties is putting, neighboring counties, is putting in an alert system. And what it allows us to do is to connect all of our partners, you know, law enforcement and the emergency room and EMS and all those folk that might come in contact with someone that is in an overdose situation. But we, if something shows up on the street that's particularly dangerous, any one of those organizations could identify it, and then they can report it to the, to, to the central location, and that information can go out to all of the partners, including communities, so the community knows, "Oh, wait a minute, I need to be super careful," or, "Wait a minute, this is what might be going on with Aunt Hattie," or, you know, whatever. But, but we're hoping that this is something that our county will decide is a good idea for them. We're gonna have the Tall Cop Says Stop in, Jermaine Galloway. He does amazing talks on what's really going on in the drug trends, and, and he's very dynamic and very knowledgeable, and they're coming up in, well, we have one March seventeenth and one April fourteenth. And they're coming up um in, well, we have one March seventeenth and one April fourteenth, they're in partnership with Clamath. And so we'll get that information out, we hope we'll have great attendance by law enforcement and um emergency services and, you know, anybody like that 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 might need to know about some of these things because the the drug culture is pretty clever in marketing. So everyone in our room, in this room, recognizes the challenges of being a rural community with stretched resources. Um our population health and prevention staff, we we reach out to agencies involved in, you know, the different steps of overdose events and we're gathering information and then and trying to see what's the best way to move forward. But it's hard because what we really want to do is talk about building resilience and um, you know, helping people make positive, healthy choices and all that. But at the same time, we still do have to talk about and point out those difficult things that we need to try to a- address and 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 share uh with our cur- community to keep everybody as safe as possible. We have a lot of great programs coming up and things that we do as we as we know. But um as leaders, you can help our communities be safer by taking a position of support uh as we move forward on the Harm Reduction Project and um and potentially, you know, look at whether we can adopt some of these things that turn out to be working for other communities. So, do you have questions?
Not really, I I did have one question about pillboxes in Nor- at the Northlake uh end. Um you were saying you couldn't really find anyone to put any of those boxes or to keep one of those boxes. So is there no one at the clinic that could do that or even at the annex building?
Um the clinic was um unwilling, I asked, and they said no. And um I think uh if if I had to, you know, guess why, I'm gonna say that they think that that none of those places have a strong enough um security system. I know that when I talked to law enforcement about it in the past up there, that's what they said. Um and um so uh yeah, Lapine said, no, we have one in Lapine in itself and we're not putting one in Christmas Valley. And 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 so, yeah, it's it it's hard. The the mailers will help, though, if we can do a big campaign to get people to understand that that's available to them once it gets them and approved through the state. The people that that run it, it's a nonprofit running in other states, and they're just waiting for Oregon to approve them to run in this state, and then we'll be able to to implement that. Um uh as I said, we we did drug takebacks before in the past, but the last few years, uh we've asked uh and and we haven't been able, that they haven't been able to, you know, dedicate someone to to be there north and south um or even south and and um and hang out, you know, to 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 take back those drugs.
Uh well.
And they've got fifty pounds, thirty-five pounds uh on on those events in the past.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, um let me reach out to the director um of the Lapine hel- uh the Lapine Clinic and ask her what she thinks, and maybe there's a possibility we can revisit it and see what we can do if if we can make some work. Because I really, at this point, I don't really see why we couldn't. So uh whether they have one in Lapine or not, um there's, we have, there's a clinic in Christmas Valley, so I don't see why.
Right.
It would be possible to have that option and availability there. And yeah, the security concerns, there's a ton of other things in that building that are locked down and are more than secure. I don't see why it would be a major deal to have a box up there, so.
Well, I'm sure that your voice asking is much stronger than mine.
Okay, well, I'll I'll at least revisit it and I'll, we'll see if there's any some some.
That would, that would be great.
All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions, Barry?
No, not at this time, just good information, thank you, Francie.
Good, I do try, thank you, thank you. And uh hopefully, next time, we'll talk about something more fun. Because we do have cool things coming, so thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, Francie. All right, um we have some uh untimed items on the agenda, does anyone need a quick break?
Very difficult.
Oh, yeah, this one's simple.
Let's go, let's get moving forward that day, so come on up.
This one's pretty simple. Uh late piece sanitation, sold a late piece sanitation service or LC LLC. Better get a new uh contract in place with the new owners. So it's basically the same as what we've had in place, other than uh we made a few changes, or just a couple. Just uh we put in there where the contract may be terminated by a county or contracted within ninety days of written notice. It just kind of, sun goes south, which is easier for us to go, we decide we're gonna do something different out there. Kind of gives us that opportunity to be able to do that, and vice versa, for them to, they decide they don't wanna haul our stuff anymore, well, we better figure it out. But we're just kind of, we're not so bonded to that contract, we're not, you know, once we go on that contract, if you don't have that in there, where stuff can go. You know, now, and we changed it from five years to two.
Yeah, it's every, every two years instead of five years. They had a five-year thing in place, I went two years, it just helps with negotiation.
Right.
On both sides of that.
Working through this and stuff, yeah.
Through through this, uh the pricing's on the back, it's been the same.
Uh late piece sanitation, it's under new ownership, but Kevin Sturridge is still.
Yeah, Kevin Sturridge is still the manager, Lepes Muntz still runs it. So pretty simple, this, same as it's always been, just changing a few things, and then they looked it over and they're agreeing with it.
Okay.
It's good business to your agreement.
I have no questions, I live. Did you want, did you want action on this today? I don't.
I don't, man, you can, you guys can do it tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll probably do it tomorrow, it's not on there for action. Right. Anything today, so.
We're still moving forward, moving along, so I'm gonna showstopper if you wrap it down today.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um we also have uh Kevin Hawk um on the delineator post, is Kevin gonna call in?
Well, he was wanting to call in at ten thirty, but I told him we were running late, so he should call in at any time.
Okay.
I can text you.
We can, we can move forward on to other things then, um we have plenty of other things to go through. Uh Anne Crumrind, of course, uh she has three things to go through. Do we want to jump down to the solar advisory committee application? Because we did get another application on that, or get that out of the way. And then maybe we can get Anne, let Anne know that we're ready.
Well, let's take a break.
What's that?
Can we take a break?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, do you you wanna take a break?
Well, at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm sitting here for an hour and forty minutes.
I hear ya. Okay, um let's go ahead and do that then, let's go ahead and take a break, we'll come back in at ten forty-five.
Okay. My back's killing me, I need to get my keys on. Okay, we're still on two.
Yep.
Kevin, are you here?
I've said it before, I can do it the other way.
I'll rock through some, I just, I don't know how long these guys are gonna be, but uh we'll see. One of the things that was meant to also make sure that we add E O C C O to our legations. Because that's on my. Oh, just um I'm adding another lead on my list. One that should have been on there, but we never put it on.
Yeah, I need to get that.
I have it on my screen, you want me to print it out for you?
Well, I haven't had.
Oh, okay.
You might not have very strange.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I have to turn mine off and then put it back on the, sorry.
So do they actually cut you open?
Yeah.
I didn't have to have my elbow done this time, so that makes it a lot easier.
So it's just the rest?
It's quite rare here in the home. Electricity when I, when I was getting my procedure and they're prepping me.
Wow.
And then, so I lay there for a while, pretty soon, they wanted what, the generator come on, but they can't operate on me. I guess it's certain, so I had to sit in a chair for almost three hours.
Did they have to give you anesthesia again? Have they already given anesthesia to you?
They hadn't given me, they had just brought me into the operating room and was doing everything, but they hadn't actually gave me anesthesia yet.
So at that point in time, you're probably not wanting anesthesia, you're probably wanting some, like, relaxer.
Yeah. I should have requested one.
Yeah.
Oh, he's having trouble.
Okay.
I don't remember his calling.
Do we?
But so we didn't get home until.
Yeah, just calling, I'm, I'm, because there's no one else.
One o'clock?
Eleven.
Oh, eleven, wow. I I sent him a message.
Driving at night on slippery roads, and that would be a little making this work, too.
They got cold.
I knew if I was traveling and trying to call in that I would mishaps with it. So uh we covered all late piece hotels and here about that, all of them.
I was wondering, seventy, was there seventy-five kids there?
Hey, Kevin.
Good.
Out of town.
And then, granted, concession stand, right, Kobe Baldwin?
Close to Clamath, get a looper.
Yeah, there we are.
Thirty kids.
Good.
I'll take the session.
It didn't.
Are you ready to call?
Yeah, um we'll go ahead and open the session back up, it's about ten forty-seven. Um Kevin, you're on the line, uh we'll go back uh to uh the delineator posts. Want to give us a quick overview on that?
Uh one of you gentlemen should be a sales quote from Traffic Safety Supply. Um there's actually several items on this. On the first page, the target plate, the hot rivet washers, all of the hardware derivatives and all attached to target plates are included in that per per unit price. Um on page two, it shows um a custom quote there for um thirty-six by six inch track style blanks. Those are for, we we need those installed, um because we have road signs that get stolen all the time. So I thought those are for, if you were looking at that and wondering. But the primary um purpose here is to fix under delineators. We'd like to in increase and delineate Christmas Valley Highway um one of the conservatories, so this um traffic safety supply is the um place in our region to be able to purchase the type one uh field gallonized post with the W one targets. And on the cover page there included the. And on the cover page there included the brand name and second source group for you guys. Is there, is there any question or anything else you need to know?
Yeah, I was just going over it. And, uh, I'm having a hard time seeing exactly what the quantity is that you were actually looking to order.
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
Is this six hundred? Okay, sorry, I was. Oh, it's on, on there, okay, gotcha. Each, yeah.
The total, the total is, the total cost with, with the blinds that we also need installed and the brake charge because these are metal posts, so they're fairly heavy. Is thirteen thousand five hundred six dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah.
Okay, I have no questions.
Yeah, I have no questions, Kevin, you reached out to me earlier and we talked about this and, uh. Just, I, I think it's, uh, just good to go ahead and get these, we don't know what steel's gonna do going forward, we know that we really want the steel, I think it's a good idea to go that route. Over the, uh, the fiberglass, uh, plastic delineator posts. So, um, I don't really have any questions, I, I think this is a good direction for us to go.
Yeah, the, I guess I should mention that just so that all the commissioners are aware, the fiberglass ones we do utilize in some locations. Excuse me, the, the higher traffic volume and so forth on Crescent Valley Highway, now we, we'd like to have the, the metal with the target. Um, the fiberglass ones are nearly the cost, um, uh, the steel ones and they don't get near the light. Uh, the UV on them allows them to break down pretty quickly and we found that they, they wear out faster than what we'd like, so we get a lot more longevity out of the steel.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, uh, no questions, we can act on that tomorrow.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet, thank you.
Just a reminder, make sure that I won't be here.
Okay, uh, if you do have any concerns, I would just bring them forward now, then I guess.
Never hold your peace.
No worries, but no, that's a good reminder because you have A O C tomorrow. Yeah.
And Saturday.
And Saturday.
Today your first day of accounting.
What time does that start?
One o'clock.
Okay, we'll be done by then, well, well before. So, moving on. And, Primra, would you like to take us through the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget calendar officer?
Yes. So this is just, uh, standard procedure, every year, um, for our budget process. We start off by approving a calendar that has target dates for when specific things need be accomplished. It also sets our budget meeting dates, uh. We have to have a quorum of our budget committee, which is you three gentlemen, and then Clayton Sharp, John Jones, and Craig Foster. So it's nice to get these meeting dates on calendars as soon as possible. I sent this draft out to you guys, um, a couple of weeks ago and didn't see any, any conflicts yet, but, um. It's good to review right now and then get it on everybody's calendar as soon as possible. Few dates that are important here. Uh, the very first meeting that we talked about for twenty-one, twenty-two calendar is that February sixteenth work session date. That's the opportunity for you as a governing body to provide me consensus ideas on our budget bill. So we don't make specific decisions at that meeting, it's just an overview and kind of a guide for me. Sorry, your budget officer, whoever you appoint, because it may not be me, whoever, whoever.
Your partner, place this over.
Um, to start that budget build process, so. Yeah, two things happen today, you appoint the budget officer and approve the calendar today.
The other week is that.
Which?
Which one, uh, February sixteen?
That should be Tuesday, that's what I was hoping for, is that Tuesday work session.
February sixteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we, we discussed quite a few things there, uh, targets for contingency, targets for, um, ending front balances, targets for reserves. We also discussed the admin fee and what that calculation looks like, you know, and if we wanna change it, things like that. So there's a lot of, lot of topics that day that we go through.
So just, just real quick, going back in my head, we do have this on your appoint budget officer and budget committee for December eighth. And, uh, that's on a sample budget calendar, did we already do that? We did not do it.
No, I'm not yet, it's maybe we.
What sample budget calendar you?
I'm looking at the one, the one you provided us.
Okay, that is actually from the state of Oregon, that is a big budget, that's like a budget manual overview, and so they provide samples in there of what about a budget calendar could look like.
Gotcha. Okay.
You should have in your.
That is not ours then.
That is not ours. Yeah, I provided just, you know, a budget basics, um. For your, for your educational purposes and they had a, a sample there. You should have a page in your documents that looks like this.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
May eleventh and May thirteenth, I should have looked at the calendar before I pulled that in. I'm hoping that's a, I don't know if someone has a calendar here, I'm hoping that's a Tuesday and Thursday. It's nice to have the day off in between to get caught up on.
Today's.
Okay, okay, so it's nice to have Monday to prepare final preparations, it's nice to have, you know, the meetings Tuesday. Get caught up on the minutes and, and documentation Wednesday, and then meet again and finalize things on Thursday, that's what our. Uh, plan is setting up those meetings.
So when do we have the date to declare a budget officer?
Um, we do tomorrow's meeting.
Yeah.
And is that traditionally been you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, unless you want to do it.
No.
Then.
So you wanna carry that over?
The, uh, the goal for the extra money or the, uh, what do we call that?
The two kinds of positive money, contingency, um, you know.
Contingency.
We've, we've had a target that we've used for several, several years that served us well, it's around two hundred thousand, um.
I was just asking if it served us well.
It has.
That's people.
It has.
Okay.
What, what?
It's hard, I'm me.
It is.
I'm not a very hard time.
I watched it, yeah. Yep, I watched it this year, I'm just curious.
I mean, I, I say it every year, so I'm, I'm off the broken record, the goal that's maybe should be looked at is the unappropriating fund balance. Cause as that figure has not changed, but our salaries have gone up, we see those cash dollars in October before taxes come in. Get, I mean, I remember back in the day, this year was the worst I've seen it since we've received a new pipeline. So, uh, from my chair, I get nervous about that number.
Right.
You know. Very close, and it is again, a tough thing to do in budget, it's a tough. Ask.
Another tough thing, as you guys will know, is our wages. And. I sent a letter at Jim Bailey and I think I C C'd, you guys don't want it. The problem is, is we decide whether we get a raise or not. Which not only we don't like doing that because, one, politically it looks terrible. Number two is, you know, we can, we're not supposed to make any decisions that are based on our own individual. That we would profit by. We profit by it, and so it's kind of going against its own law. But it is a law that we have to decide. So, one of my thoughts is, is that we make an ordinance. That when it comes to our wages, the budget, we follow the both budget committee's guidelines on whatever they decide. Um, and the reason I wanna do that is because if we keep not taking a wage increase. Four years from now or eight years from now, when other commissioners are involved. They're going to be thousands and thousands of dollars behind. We're already seventeen percent behind and just using the Lake, Lakeview waters, uh. Issue as an example. Like, the town of Lakeview never increased the water for sixteen years. And now they gotta make a twenty-five percent increase just to get even where they're not making money. And so, none of us have done this for the money, but on the other hand is, are we really helping our future commissioners by taking our raise? And so. It's a very hard dilemma for me, and so, um. I was just trying to think of other ideas on how we can, because it regulates Ann's wages, all election officials' wages, um. And so. I just don't wanna be eight years out going, man, we should have known something different. So. It's just a topic of discussion on that, so.
I guess I have mixed feelings on it, uh, part of it is the, the budget committee, I think, does a really good job. And put that extra pressure on them. May not be their job, um, they make a recommendation, we either accept it or we don't. We gotta step up, either accept it or we don't, right? So, that's just kind of how I feel, but, uh, I know that, um. It becomes personal and people don't look at it favorably, but, uh. We have to also do good business if we can, that's our decision.
Well, you guys, if you remember, uh, several years ago, uh, when the budget committee brought this to us. The full budget committee was in support of us getting the raise, it was our three votes that basically made the motion die. Because we couldn't vote in favor of it.
Well, so I, I'm just using last year as for example, we're seventeen percent behind. What are we gonna be this year? What are we gonna be next year? And if we don't do something. We're gonna be in trouble, and I, I'm just throwing this out there, I don't have to answer, but I know. Anyways, it's just kind of puts us, the, the state rules puts us in a awkward position.
Well, ethically, yeah, I assume it's really. That's why we all, we both voted no last time was because we didn't feel comfortable voting on something that was going to benefit us in that capacity. But even though all three of the budget committee. They voted to raise our salaries. I don't know, I, I, I haven't really thought about this a lot, but I don't really have an answer. Is there more discussion on that?
Let's, let's just for the record, make sure we state the law. The first law is that there's an elected compensation review committee. Um, whose task is to look at every elected position in Lake County and recommend a salary. That recommendation is provided to the governing body for acceptance or rejection, that's it. The second law that we're talking about is that the budget committee is the only authority in state law to change an elected official's salary. Period. It has to happen at the budget committee level. And, and, and by design, it is not just the governing body that makes that change, you're relying on. Three equals from your county to help make that decision as well. That has all the information in front of them as far as if the budget committee voted or not, or finances, so. So I think it's, it's very important that, um, the laws are talked about. And, and when, when people say, you know, and the public gets a little bit frustrated that they feel like you're voting in your, your self a salary, make sure you're clear on the law. That, that, I mean, that is the, I thought Jim Bailey's response was, uh, well written. I wa, I mean, I wish it was easier on you guys, but. I don't, I can't think of the best solution, I don't think anybody's come up with a better idea, that's why the law hasn't changed. It, it is what it is, so.
And you, yeah, so you, you did speak just the lady's response.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you tried her.
Okay. Because she knew the law, we've been reminded, so.
Well, every, every, uh, every year, it is a, a topic of discussion and I get the. The reluctance of being involved in, um. But like I said, I can't, I don't have a better solution and no one's come up with a better one, that's why it's, the law hasn't changed, and so.
So I am going into the next budget cycle, I know last year you guys talked a lot about, uh, impacts of COVID and shutdowns, we're gonna affect the future years. Are you, uh, anticipating, uh, downturns in certain, uh, areas?
You know, it's, it's still probably shocked everybody, shocked the state too. Right now, the state revenue forecast is really holding steady.
Yeah.
Uh, income taxes are being paid just like they always have been, the federal support and CARES Act dollars is probably. Boosting up some of that, and until that really truly falls off, the state can't say for sure. The state does know that.
But, yeah.
High income people weren't that effective. Sad to say, but it's true, um, so it, from that respect, state income taxes are coming in quite nicely. Um. How it will impact, uh, certain services that we rely on, the state can, for instance. Veteran services, a lot of that is in law with lottery funding, but there is talk that we're gonna see a decline there. There is talk about the decline of the Department of Corrections budget, uh, for a multiple reasons there, that was not just COVID. It's, I think, so it's, it's kind of like this time of year, we have to stay true.
Page your work tip.
Yeah, right now, it's not, it's not looking like it's going to be as high as what we predicted it was going to be at the very start of this. Even our own property tax collections have come in, you know.
Barely stood.
Barely stood me very well, um, so we're seeing even our own taxpayers here keep up with what their responsibilities and bills are.
Did we get the Ruby backline, or are they?
Yeah.
How much less is it this year?
Um, it was less, but not the significant amount that we've seen in the past, um.
It's like last year is about a hundred grand, right?
Yeah.
And then the year before it was even a little bit more.
It was even a little bit more, the state changed their administrative rules that now they're required to notify us. I believe it's in August, if we see that tax valuation go down a million or more, and it, we didn't hit that threshold last year. It did, it did decline, but not the extent we'd seen in the past.
And their, and their taxes are based on capacity and the actual.
It's the revenue of the company, there, there's, they have now shifted over it because construction's complete, everything's done. It's, it's the revenue of the company, they look at the overall company, this is a, this is my understanding of it, if I. We could get down the degree, but my understanding is they look at the overall value of the company. And then they kind of keep partitioning that down to, okay, this chunk is in Oregon, this chunk's in Lake County. You know, this chunk's in Claymont County, what, like, what the overall value and revenues of the company. So as we see, um, natural gas market go down, you know, if there's a surplus of natural gas, there's, there's not as much demand for it at the moment, they're, they've got excess capacity of natural gas. That value, that company goes down a little bit, and so, that's what we're missing.
Yeah, I noticed that with the fuel prices go down, so does the, our, our revenue. And so, if fuel prices go up, hopefully that will go up also, so.
Possible, I'm not sure. If it poorly, if, that, natural gas is on the market. Little bit.
I think, I think the reason why. Because natural gas is more desirable, then fuel prices go up. because natural gas is more desirable, then fuel prices go up.
Yeah.
And that, and that's how it's right.
Yeah.
You know, how it needs its steel. So, consumption goes up with natural gas, when are fuel prices going to go up? Right? Because people are trying to save money.
Yep.
Will the stem from Red Rock have any effect on it?
Well, on our revenues, Red Rock, we entered into a community service fee agreement with Red Rock. They get a, a tax incentive to site and locate here. That agreement was negotiated quite a few years ago and is with the town of Lakeview. We won't see property tax income that is outside of that agreement. I think it's a fifteen-year agreement once they start operating, I need to double check that. And it's the year after they become operational. So, if we're anticipating them being operational in twenty-one, we'll see that community service fee in twenty-two. I wanna say our, our amount really truly is only about sixty thousand dollars.
And the town of Lakeview's like a couple hundred thousand, if I remember.
Part of our agreement in negotiations with Red Rock was also for them to, in lieu of paying us a community service fee, those dollars went back into investment in the natural gas line to town. So, it rich benefits everybody.
Yeah, right. Okay, and then, but getting back to Ruby though, Ruby and then Red Rock using that stem.
Yeah.
Natural gas, it's probably just minimal.
I think so. Uh, where we could see some other tax income, probably more so the town of Lakeview, but if we start seeing natural gas be delivered in town as a utility, you know, the values of things could go up, that company could do well here. And so, there, there would be, you know, trickle-down effects that we could see.
We just have to find a company that's willing to
Take it on.
to take that on and sell that to the community as a, as a utility.
Part to do with, so a few customers, you know.
Right.
Right, building an infrastructure like that, yeah.
Yes. The instructions there.
Yeah.
So, right now, these dates look okay to everybody's calendars here?
Yes.
Okay. Like I said, it's, the earlier I know, the better, because it's hard to change some of those.
They look good together, at least. I
There was a, there was a question to the, uh, the Nevada roundup crew, make sure the state works.
Something around May one, so that's good. Just popped into my, yeah, there.
Right, your recent life.
Okay, so that's that topic. Do you guys wanna move into the twenty twenty-one budget resolutions next?
Absolutely.
Okay. This is stemming from our COVID support dollars that we received through the CARES Act, through the state to go into a little bit of budget law. Some of these dollar values are high enough that it should, or it would warrant a supplemental budget process, which is a different public notification and hearing. However, because it's made from another unit of government and passed through, we can do the simplified resolution process here. So, I'm kinda curious how everybody's handling this. This is not a unique situation in Lake County, it's statewide, nationwide, how these dollars are affecting budgets, so. Uh, I chose to, well, we have two resolutions in front of you. Let's talk about the COVID one first, since I'm already there, which is twenty twenty dash zero seven. I chose to do this all in one resolution.
Wait, the first one was listed as?
Yeah, you wanna talk, right? We can come right back to that.
Oh, seven, okay, oh, seven.
So, we are increasing in several different funds. In general fund, federal resources would increase eighty-five thousand two hundred. We had large technology purchases for laptops and things for people to be able to work remotely from home. And, you know, updated equipment even for our share of companies. And so, that's where that general fund dollars were going. The Fair Board received COVID income in a couple different ways. This one is, again, the CARES Act dollars through the county and then the choice to put them into the RV park there for expansion and, and separating that for social distancing to meet the COVID protocols now. So, that's a forty-five thousand dollar increase in Fair Board. The Economic Development Fund has the, the largest number here and it's kind of an eye-opener. Six hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. That is from two separate rounds of CARES Act dollars that we received. Some was from the county resources that came into us that we then distributed to different emergency service providers for equipment and responding and dealing with COVID patients. The second was the Small Business Grant Program that we contracted with SCOWID to administer on our B cap. They already had the rules in place, the application process. And so, that's why that number was so significant. Those dollars were about five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that went through SCOWID for that Small Business Program. And I, I was very happy to see how many businesses received those dollars. It seemed to be spread well throughout the county, throughout different, you know, that are priority businesses first, but then even allowed for some funding to some businesses that maybe weren't, you know, high on priority lists in other places, but here they could access it, so. Are there questions about that? It's, it's a very high-level overview, it's like big dollars there.
Yeah.
I can provide more details down into kind of the, maybe during the all of that as well.
I don't really have any questions. We, you and I went over this early on when I first started getting those figures. And I asked you for a printout of all the businesses and everything as well that received those funds. And that was, it was a good list, like you said, to look at.
Yeah.
Good distribution. It was interesting that, you know, we, we spent a lot of time, you know, trying to make sure that if money wasn't spent, that, that if businesses could show that they had additional losses, that you could come back and get more. And really, we didn't even have many businesses that could make it, because we had so many businesses that had those hardships. And, and, but it was also nice to see that a few businesses were like, I don't need that full amount.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't need that full twenty grand, I don't, you know, I, these are my losses and just be nice to cover these.
Yeah.
But, yeah. It was, I don't have any other real questions, so, pretty straightforward.
The other resolution, twenty twenty dash zero six, let me go out of order. This is, uh, for our software, our Tyler conversion fee. The contract with Tyler required us to make an annual maintenance payment, like within so many days of conversion or within the time period of like signing the contract. I, I, I looked at the time period of signing the contract and thought we weren't gonna have to make a payment until next fiscal year. But the other clause kicked in so many days after the conversion. And so, this, this, this is an error on my part, didn't, didn't account for the appropriate maintenance fees. And this is because we did have extra revenue in the county land sale. Our county land sale was very positive. We sold a lot of properties, received a lot of income from that, it was higher than what we budgeted. So, what I'm asking you to do is take a little bit of that extra revenue there and plug it into materials and services for the Treasury Department on that software. Jay and I split the software costs. Right now, his department is able to handle and absorb the maintenance fee on his side. They haven't been able to travel with COVID. And so, he, we're, we're gonna watch that budget bill. It's, it's possible to come back before you and get a little bit more appropriation for, for his department, or right now.
It's looking.
They may be able to absorb it.
Okay. So, it won't require a resolution?
But hopefully.
Hopefully.
So, those are the two resolutions for you at this time. Any questions?
No. So, we're gonna have, we're gonna have that maintenance fee every year.
Yeah, that's gonna go up. It goes up a certain percentage every year. We have a maintenance fee with our prior contract as well, which are not better yet in escalation. It's, it's higher than the one we had before, but
So, are you pretty satisfied with them? I mean, I know it's a brand-new system.
There's been a lot of frustration in the holidays and everything, you know, and I know working through this, the software's been very challenging.
Oh, yeah, I would say Nikki's had her head buried in it for probably six months. The payroll conversion was a significant burden, because not only there, so many things about when we converted caused that hardship. If we could've converted on like January first, payroll would've been a breeze. But we converted in November, so we had to pull in all the historic data from January first of twenty twenty by quarter. And it was, uh, we, we thought when we were converting that we were gonna be able to like provide some Excel spreadsheets. Here we go, here's what it is loaded up for us. No, the, it was, here's the spreadsheet, you guys fill this in and then you're gonna load it and see where your errors are. So, it, it doubled, sometimes tripled work. There was a few payrolls that Nikki had to do side-by-side, you know, so she's doing one payroll in our old system, doing another payroll in the new system, making sure everything was tying out appropriately. So, not only learning it, but making sure that's all right, huge cuts there. Um, as far as, you know, and then Nikki's took a lot of ownership of that, did great. She, I think she has a really good understanding of the new system. I think the new system's going to help with reporting, both with hers, reporting, tax reporting and things like that's gonna be a lot more accurate, easy to make sure that it's accurate. The other thing that's really nice is people are able to get online and see their own leave-in earnings statement anytime they want. And we're moving forward towards them being able to enter their time online too, instead of a piece of paper submitted to the payroll department. From my perspective, uh, it was, again, mind-boggling to me to pick a middle-of-the-month date in November during tax season to do a conversion. And so, uh, you know, when your, your, your funds and banks are balancing in an old system, you know where the liabilities are, you know what's outstanding, has to be paid. And then how the new system handled some of those liabilities, bringing in the funds and banks and balances and things like that. Again, not the, not the end of the month, like in the middle of the month, in, in the middle of tax season. Um, wait, it, it's a lot of stress, right? Uh, Tyler Support Team though, that's why we chose this software company. Their support is fantastic. They literally are available twenty-four seven. I, I feel like right now, if we had to call them, like if something happened to me, someone had to step in and do a crash rescue or even help with budgeting, you could call them and go, okay, walk me through this process and they, we right there doing it. Um, and that's part of that maintenance fee. There are certain support things that would cost us, but some of those things are just right there in that maintenance fee.
What's the upscale maintenance fee typically, percentage throughout the years? You say it goes up each year, so what's, what do you look at?
You know, it, it seems to me it's around a thirty percent increase.
Okay.
I don't know if it's tied to any kind of CPI. For some reason, thirty percent is stable.
Okay, alright.
So, the, uh, Russell pulled in fixed assets into the system. So, our auditors are very helpful in, in setting up fixed assets in our accounting system. We haven't done that before. Isn't that seeming to be a nice feature moving forward, make the audit process a little bit more streamlined and accurate and quick? So, there's things we're still focusing on.
Sounds like the positives outweigh the negatives.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And then I think at this point, time has seen the light at the end of the tunnel. I mean, I think there was, you know, there was some months there, both Nikki and I were on the phone constantly. Didn't feel like we were getting anything done and then sometimes having to do things over and over again. And it was very, very frustrating.
Yeah.
And then, you know, finding out that we have significant issues with our old system, you know, and how that came out and working through those processes.
And our old system was actually a Canadian company. And I think we're the only, we're the
The last ones.
Yeah, it was, I, I'm, I'm not even sure like how many US clients they still had. I know they were trying to get out of Oregon for sure. I'm not sure there were any more Oregon clients with them.
Yeah. But it's Washington or something.
Yeah.
And then our, so our tax conversion from them was off.
Yeah, like the digits missing in the social security numbers for our employees and different things. So, Nikki would have to go in and manually check and entering all those. I mean, it was, it was time. But there, there was a lot of discussion around going to Tyler, because this software is quite something. It's, it's not, it's like upgrading a little bit from a Ford to a Ferrari. Uh, you know, you're just, you, you're just quite a little bit of a jump, so. And it's very expensive, but, um, it really is needed.
Yeah. And we're still trying to get our arms wrapped around it before we really kinda dive in and start training all the managers.
Right.
Um, there's kind of little pieces here and there that we're getting people up to speed on. But that's why managers probably aren't as happy about it yet, because they don't see all the benefits of it. We, we're still getting set up ourselves before we pull that out.
We know it's gonna be challenging though, way back to the
Well, I, this is the second, actually, to really talk about, it's the third software conversion I've gone through here at the county. I went through one out of the road department. And then I went through one here, the county, and this one, and I love management.
Yeah, never say never. Oh, my goodness. Well.
Anyway, that's the Tyler, Tyler conversion, so.
Alrighty.
The last item I have before you is a contract. I'm gonna run it back up. We have a grant with Oregon VQ to write us a community response plan for smoke management. Saying that right there.
Yep.
So, originally, when we entered into this VQ grant agreement, Kendall Martel with the Ford's, the Ford Stewart's Guild was taking it on as a project. And so, the dollars really were just passing through the county, going to that organization to pay Kendall's time in this project. COVID hit, and some other things held up Kendall. And now, this project was, according to DQ timelines and tasks and things like that, in serious risk of default. So, Kendall was, uh, you know, open to different ideas and, and moving on with different things in her life. She made contact with Autumn here, who works with the, the
The Watershed Council.
The Watershed Council. And so, thank goodness, Autumn was able to have time for this and willing to do it.
Right.
Um, so puts us in a, a position to sign a contract with her, and she is an independent contractor to complete this project. What, what's still, the, the original grant was for thirty-five thousand dollars. That included both writing the plan, talking about it, um, unit testing it, community meetings, but also HEPA filter purchase program. So, we have not drawn down any dollars from VQ yet. The Ford Stewart's Guild just started billing us last month. Right now, we have about a five thousand dollar bill from them, waiting for November and December bills. That five, those, those bills may be negotiated a little bit. We're not exactly sure that what's being charged is indicative of what got produced. So, the dollars remaining for this contract are a little bit uncertain right at this point in time. Autumn and I did agree to use a twenty thousand dollar, not to exceed cost right here, because it won't include HEPA filter purchases. This really truly should just be the cost of the meetings, the plan, the data analysis, all of those things. So, less the HEPA filters, less what we had to pay for Stewart's Guild. I told her if that amount needs to change, we'll amend it to this, because it's unclear. But we needed to get this in place so she could work ahead. Jim Bailey didn't do his review and he said, looks good, yeah? And then, so here's this contract. Any questions on?
Sure.
I'll leave it all down.
Can you do this one?
Yeah.
Very deep thought.
A lot of I think Autumn's gonna be really good on that and taking over for us.
Yeah, she's already got a Google poll for uh next meetings and.
Saw that.
You know, we'll carry core. You know, it was pretty obvious that VQ was ready to move on. And they wanted to pull Lake County money and maybe put it in another community. Uh but now it's getting in the lager's it is, other communities couldn't necessarily pull it off either. And so for Autumn to step up, this is a really big deal and and for our community, this is a big deal if we can get this approved.
Yeah, can you, I mean, I probably don't understand the significance to our community as much as.
Yeah, so uh you know, our PM two point five can't exceed thirty five. I'm going to spur.
Is it thirty or thirty five? I was thirty.
Yeah, it is. Anyway, uh one of those two. And uh there's, you know, the the next big timber sales are basically from Upper Cottonwood to the falls. And we just did the North Warreners and we've seen some of that smoke uh come close this winter. Whether it be on private or forest land. But uh from past prescribed burns. To the north of us, we know that smoke does like to come to the valley and settle in the bottom of the state. And potentially could affect the community and the people out in the valley. So um this is a really good opportunity and it also will penalize Lakeview. If it is approved. Or exceeding thirty of what's approved.
So it really helps prescribe, like managing our timber with prescribed fire doesn't ding us on our air quality.
Correct, right.
So it is it is a it is.
Because we have discussed all the options with the public, we've we've given them preventative measures to keep smoke. Uh given them a fair warning when that's gonna happen, Hepa filters are an option, you know, things like that. So it's really about communicating and reaching out to the public.
Yeah, the um.
We need to get our forest cleared up.
Right. One of the things that was concerning me, I think maybe you guys could enlighten me a little bit on trying to go back to some of the early conversations that we were having about that particular matter. It was it was uh I think we had it set in county ordinance at about thirty. And that's what I think it was originally set, but then they were asking us to lower it to twenty five.
I think he said in the future, there's a chance.
Good chance it could, okay.
They DQ.
Oh, I will fight that.
Well, yeah, they were, that was kind of what I was getting was that they were wanting that.
We started out at like forty or something and then it's.
It's down like thirty seven, yeah.
I also do not support a uh your horses down here across from the old uh. Or an ephalometer is down there across from the old car wash and I do not support a second, no, I don't. Even though they say they will use that chat.
Yeah.
Well, the one thing if they average them, but.
No, I don't.
There's no benefit.
Well, if if you recall, I actually brought that recommendation to you guys from the committee originally about a year and a half ago. I think it was, it was a meeting that they were that they wanted to make that adjustment. And to reduce that um limit, it was twenty five and we had said no back then as well. But um.
I'm not aware of any community that's at twenty five.
Neither am I, so.
So for us to do it would be crazy.
Yeah, especially in a conversion right here at the base of these hills and everything else. I suppose I was just bringing it up because I was kind of curious to hear where where my board was at with that today.
Now, uh the administration may push for a, you know, nationally to regionally to try to lower it, but we'll see.
Right, okay. Well, I'm good with this then and uh thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ann.
So next up is uh solar advisory. We have an application uh from Justin Farrell with the Soil and Water Conservation District. Is there any discussion we'd like to have on this? Uh we'll have, we can. We could act on this today.
I think Justin will do a good job on the committee. He did get to hear, you know, some of the discussions we had in our last work session.
Right.
And hopefully uh whoever kicks this off will have assumptions with some of the members and that we can have. That they'll all get briefed right off the bat. So that it doesn't uh, you know, people like Justin that are coming in late. Have a good understanding of what we've asked.
Right, and. Would would either of you guys like to speak with Justin individually? It is our committee, but uh you know, just because of some of that early conversation. The other thing is, how many members do we actually have on the committee ends up right now? We've approved pretty much everyone.
I don't know, I can get back to you on that.
Okay, I think we may have like eight or nine, so we're getting kind of heavy.
Yeah.
So um.
I think we've kind of rounded it off. We've got, you know, we have the solar people and we have the agricultural people.
Yeah.
The water, um. So.
And yeah, so I'm I'm good with this. Um I think Justin will be a good representative of the Soil and Water Conservation District as well, you know, and just kind of bring some of the issues that they're facing to the table. Uh he'll speak for himself obviously, but well, actually, it does say um Lake County Soil and Water Conservation District. So they may have actually appointed him to speak for. That group. Um it says printed name. He does put in Justin Farrell, but he actually uses. The Soil and Water Conservation District email and their name, so um.
I guess it brings up a good point. Go ahead, Donald.
Oh, no, I um he just left it um vague in case you guys wanted to point and to appoint a different representative other than him.
Oh.
And he does feel very strongly and the Soil and Water Conservation District feel very strongly that dealing with irrigated land, do you appoint someone who's soil and water?
Okay, I I suppose my only question would, I'd like to have some clarification from him as to whether or not his board. Or anyone, you know, they had a vote and said, you know, like, we want you to kind of go and represent us or anything like that.
Well, he's the head of this one, all right?
Yeah.
And so. I'm assuming he speaks for them. But whatever.
There's a lot of folks on those on that committee. I think Jaylen Chucky was on it. I think uh Leroy Horton and other folks are on it. So um. Yeah, so uh I just uh just kind of curious. That was a point that was made during their last meeting, you know, all of these folks are here as individuals.
I think he'll represent well. Uh do you think though, bringing up the point that our committee's probably full?
Yeah.
And we probably should really think hard before adding anybody else.
I'm not really, uh there's no one else that I really feel uh that we need to cover, so uh yeah. We're approaching that point where maybe it's gonna get a little too heavy, too people heavy.
Yes. So do you mind if I make a motion?
Uh I will definitely entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint uh.
Justin Farrell.
Yeah, I don't see where he put his name.
He put it up in the just past, yeah.
Thank you. Uh I make a motion to appoint Justin Farrell. Uh to our solar advisory committee.
Say it. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I will get a hold of Justin and ask him if he's representing. Solar Water Conservation District or if he is an independent. And then I'll. Get back to you guys.
Sounds good.
She can put it down minutes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries.
Yeah, is that what I said?
That's who he's representing.
Okay.
So. We're gonna go to the next item we have. Um was Trace up for once, are gonna be here today?
I assumed so.
Okay.
And I didn't do her homework for, so I can read it real quick if you guys want me to, but I have time.
Uh no, that's fine. Let's let's go ahead and give her a little bit extra time. We'll. We'll go down to yours actually on the award review a bit. Um. If you want to go ahead and give us a presentation on that.
So I, the bid solicitation process closed Friday at five. I received all of the bids that I solicited. Um we need to purchase a vehicle for the sheriff's department. This vehicle often tows things, so it needs to be um a heavier duty. Diesel pickup. Um the officer. Um requested a power stroke, but of course we can't specifically ask that. So um we put Oracle Lent. I am, the cheapest one that I received was from Freshen Four. The base price of thirty seven thousand six hundred thirty dollars. And I had the idea of maybe upfitting some of the things to get it up to where a little faster. Because it spends a lot of time in transition, you know, going between the phases. So if we could get that essential things already on it. From the dealer before we send it up there, I thought it get it in, get it on the road a little faster. Um so with all of those options, the total fiscal impact would be forty six thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Um that is my recommendation.
Which is a really big deal overall with everything else.
And how much did that save us? Was it around ten thousand total or?
At least.
Yeah.
And just like, I like I I love the time, like the money, but the time thing. You know, it'll take us a year sometimes to get things out after we start this process and he um. I talked to the. The dealer and he said it'd be about fifteen weeks.
Fifteen?
Until you get it, which is amazing too.
More probably than that, a couple of months. It's crazy.
Yeah. So. I really hoped we could shop more local, but these guys just blew them out of the water if they're close.
Yeah, um. Well, you mentioned the power stroke, some of the the officer requested a power stroke.
Right.
But we can't request one, why is that?
It's illegal, just the.
You're picking the the brand.
Yeah, it has to be.
Oh, I see, gotcha.
That or you can say the equivalent.
Right.
So it gives people options and it doesn't limit their ability to bid something out.
Yep. Okay, um.
What was the price difference again between Freshen and our local?
Um.
There's about a five thousand dollar difference.
Just for the base.
Just without, and then they couldn't put the other stuff on.
Half of the other stuff, yeah. Like they said that they couldn't install wiring harness and that saves a lot of time and money. You know, just having that already built in and not having to go after and like change the integrity of the um. The the vehicle and things. I know they're professionals, but.
Yeah, with all of our amenities put on it. It's only like five thousand dollars more than. Our locals.
And I'll still try to do other things local and make sure we start some business out. But just in the interest of time and efficiency, I think we should go with this option.
Yeah, um. Sorry, did you?
It's a thousand and a half.
Oh, uh. Over on one of the last pages of the quote here. Um we have, it says the tool is forty seven thousand seven hundred and six, that's what he wrote. And it says fifteen weeks or whatever, I mean, they, yeah, am I reading the right one?
What are you reading, please?
It is signed by Paul.
Uh huh.
I think it's about three pages in. And it's handwritten notes.
Mm hmm.
And it says forty seven thousand total, uh forty seven thousand seven hundred and six. Um. But we have fiscal impact of forty six.
Well, maybe we should amend that.
Okay.
Maybe my math was wonky.
I was I was just wondering if we were getting a discount in there or something.
Hmm.
Because it's. Because it's handwritten notes there, it's at forty seven, so.
And we can take things out. I just went with, I didn't use these back pages. Looks like I missed a couple of numbers, so I'd like to amend that to forty seven thousand seven hundred and six, please.
Can we take an action on this today, James?
Or I don't think, is it on there for action? No, we didn't, we didn't action on it, I just.
So make sure we have that number changed. And you might want to add his numbers up just to make sure that's right under all so much.
I'll verify that.
Yeah, because he's got some extra taxes and everything else that he's putting on there and everything, so I don't know. Okay, um. We want to move on to the next if there's any more questions, unless unless there's any questions.
Do the vehicle uh bids typically come in over the actual cost, do they come in over bid or do they help with it?
They are held to that bid. Unfortunately, I've had a vendor try to do that and uh we couldn't. So.
Alright, um stiff plan.
Mm hmm, so I need you guys to approve my stiff plan. You are the governing body of Lake County Special Transportation. Um the special advisory, special transportation, special transportation advisory committee has already approved these plans. Um I sent you the, a PDF of um the plan is. Kind of lengthy, but the meat and potatoes of it is number one, the ranked plan was expand operations for the senior center by sixteen thousand dollars approximately. Uh expand current ICFC program by forty nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Free shopping in Lakeview, eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. Free service to La Pine, nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And then number five project was weekly service to Altarice, eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. And then there is a small administration uh per project of five hundred dollars for just my salary, not my um benefits.
Um one of the only things that I saw in here was just the way it was printed out, page three.
Mm hmm.
It doesn't show um. The entirety of the definition of how you put in.
So it won't let me.
Yeah.
So I was having trouble. I just wanted you guys to have something to look, it didn't print the radio buttons, it wouldn't print it off.
Right.
Uh you would have to log into offices me to look at it and.
Yeah, because you can't scroll down and see all the words.
No, so this is just kind of a idea of the project.
Gotcha.
Search up usually by the kind of.
I didn't print it because it's thirty six pages. I just, so it wouldn't let me save it, so.
I love that one.
Okay.
I just printed the one copy and then I sent it, uh scanned it and sent it to you electronically.
Gotcha.
Just so you could have something to review.
Perfect.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Yeah.
It's very. Turn on the process.
It's labor intensive, but it's such a benefit to the community.
Yeah.
Like I could have taken up to five thousand dollars in administration fees. But I just don't feel comfortable with that because it doesn't take me that much time and I'd rather put those resources to help the community. Like if we ever get in a crunch budget wise, I can spend more money or take more money out, but I feel like it's better suited in the program, but.
Well, you do put a lot of time and I remember when I first got here, you were doing all those ODOT trainings and everything else and going through a lot of that stuff. Well, you do put a lot of time in. I remember when I first got here, you were doing all those O DOT trainings and everything else and going through a lot of that stuff. Takes a lot of time, so.
Yeah, and we do, um, have money that goes for administrative time out of the other funds too. This is on a stiff.
Gotcha, yeah. Okay, any other questions on that? Being done, uh, we'll move on to Commissioner Albertson's nuisance ordinance discussion.
So with the nuisance ordinance, I don't necessarily think we need to make a whole lot of changes to our nuisance ordinances. Other than how we, I don't know how to say the right word. Um, how we, what our step-by-step process is gonna be is where I think our major flaws are.
Oh, enforcement.
Yeah, enforcement, very good, thank you. Um, way it is now is pretty soft handed. They send a letter, then they send a letter, and then they send a letter. They virtually don't really do much after that. What happens a lot of times is they refuse the, the letters from certified man. And so what my idea is, is to start out instead of taking on the whole nuisance problem at one shot, that we work on a certain subject in each work session, whether it be airlick structures or, uh, vegetation or, uh, household garbage, you know. And, but I think the first thing we need to do is make an outline of the enforcement and how. So the way Tushoots County does it for one is they send a letter. They give them thirty days to take care of the problem. And then the next letter is you have ten days or you're gonna get a citation. And then they send a citation, then they turn it over to the court system. And actually, if, if they don't pay the citation, it's taken to court. Then they're put on, um, if they don't pay their court fees, they're automatically, um, put on a, um, what's the name of that word?
Collections.
Collections, they go to collections. And then collections doesn't get the money, we repossess property or take the property. The thing is, is that the commissioners in our previous administration were involved in all the step-by-steps. This eliminates us. That way, we don't think we have to show favoritism or not show favoritism, the political part of it is completely removed. Um, I've spoken with Amy Kinsey upstairs. The courts are willing to take those, um, and so it takes it off of our shoulders a lot of it. Um, probably have to wait or hire a nuisance person, but, um, that would be their role, is making sure the process is followed on, on the enforcement part. There's an appeal process, you know. And so my thought, just my thoughts on this is if somebody is making an effort to clean it up after their warning order, we can be a little more lenient, but that will be our nuisance officers at their discretion on whether they're doing things. And so, um, we all know that we have multiple cases of nuisance cases in our community and, um, from South Lake County to North Lake County. I mean, there's, so, but my thought right now is to do an outline and then work on each individual case. How do we see fit?
Mm-hmm.
And if you guys are okay with that, then I'll get the outline made and presented the next time and or if you guys have any ideas on how you want the outline to be. Um, if Oregon hand book has got a few, the outline will probably just copy it.
One of the first things that we're gonna probably need to do is be able to fund a position, even if it's a stipend or something, but there needs to be someone that can put the time into doing that. And, uh, because it's a, it's a big deal, but at some point we gotta give some teeth to this thing.
Yeah, I mean, and that, and that's been the whole problem. You know, they tried it and it didn't work, you know, um. And I can think of a place that, I think he called every commissioner, um, over here, um, people that are squatting, garbage everywhere.
Right.
It's not, it's not fair to anyone and.
And our current system doesn't.
No.
It's not working. Yeah, doesn't, you put pressure on the person causing the nuisance to, it's like, and it puts a lot of pressure actually on some of our employees who have left. You know, high hands so to speak on what they can do.
And we're not doing anybody, including our employees, in favors right now, so.
Yep.
Um, so I think this is something where, I love, Commissioner I love it, I think it's, uh, we gotta make some changes.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and both ways it hasn't been working, let's try something new. Um, it may have something that we may have to revisit in the future, you know, but.
I'm sure we can revisit it.
And, but I also like going at this one thing at a time. Keeping it pretty simple so that everybody understands what we're trying to change. Uh, we'll have to keep this in mind if, if this is approved, uh, to help create that position. And then, you know, is it a standalone position or is it potentially have a, maybe a second piece to work to do, you know, nuisance plus something. Yeah, it probably depends on our needs and then also the skill set of, because.
I definitely like this, you know, we, we have talked with Ken Cooper a couple times, um, about the potential of him taking on that role, um, of the actual nuisance officer. But again, if we're going to put him into that role, uh, we have to make sure that, uh, there's a process for him to follow and continue forward, so yeah. Whatever we need to do, um, if you wanna have some, something to bring back before the board, um.
So I'll just start on the outlines and we'll just hit individual subjects every meeting and then.
Okay.
Uh, just wanted to tell you, yep. And, you know, because what I might see as a nuisance you might not do. Or maybe we need to make some adjustments, um. With the positive step, I, I, I think the main things that we gotta can concentrate is safety, uh, security, you know, firmin's that get in with junk and, uh, vegetation, you know, is it gonna be a fire hazard? I drove by a house the other day that they have their house in the garbage just sitting alongside their house.
Yep.
I mean, you're asking for rats, you're asking for, you're asking for, um, fire danger.
I just let you know, and I'm not trying to hurt you. The, uh, stress debriefing people for lost or fall shooting are just out here.
Oh, hold on, are they, are they gonna be using this?
Yes, okay.
Can they use the memorial hall?
Hmm, soil and water is down there right now, I think.
Okay, because there's access to memorial hall, this is confidential thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
There's also the juvenile.
We're almost done. Yeah, we only have a couple more things to do, we could rock it through these.
Okay, I, I, like I say, I'm not trying to force you out. I know that we had it booked for one o'clock and.
Okay.
I wasn't expecting them to show up at eleven thirty.
Okay, yeah, we'll get down here shortly.
It should be done within the next twenty minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And so, you know what I'm saying, I mean, so I think every community's got their main ones that we need to really start focusing on. I, but I also don't want somebody that's, I'm going to the extreme the other side, say somebody's working on a hot rod and it's on blocks. If they get turned in, I mean, let's, let's use common sense on some of this. You know, when you have twenty five.
Well, it's on all blocks for a long period of time.
Well, if you. Well, like, like I think Tushoots County says, if you have a vehicle that doesn't move for a certain amount of time.
Yeah.
It can be considered a nuisance and.
There you go.
You got, there's a couple places on, I'm just thinking on the south end of town that's got twenty cars out front.
Yeah, they got flat tires.
Yeah, there, it, it's, the fire can't get in there. It's, it's a home for rats and, and mice and every other thing and unlawful activity, um.
Okay.
Yeah, or so.
Okay.
And since we're gonna be moving on to our liaison list, I would like, I don't think it's, I think this is a subject that all three commissioners need to be involved in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, one of us might take the lead on one certain thing, but I think this is, needs to be a group, group liaison position.
Okay, so something for the, and, and it is on the bottom of the line as nuisance, yeah, so, okay.
That's all I have to say on that.
Okay, perfect. Um, go forward, Commissioner Schulemberg, uh, if you'd like to go into the schedule.
Okay, so we just had a meeting in Christmas Valley. At one point there I counted plus or minus thirty one people in the room. Uh, I realized that we were having, uh, you know, an open discussion about potentially, uh, increasing that tax for EMS for the north end of county. So it was a bit of a hot topic, but, uh, you know, looking at the, uh, population on the north end of county, I think warrants more than one meeting per year. And, uh.
Agreed.
I think it would be a good service to the north end to, uh, look at it, uh, potentially three times a year, quarterly.
One hundred percent.
And, and, you know, that would eliminate two Lakeview meetings. Uh, I'd like to not propose, uh, any other sites for an increase, but just, just Christmas Valley every week. And, uh, I think that that is more than fair to people of the north end.
I agree.
Cause we're getting good participation from.
Right, very good participation and it actually makes a lot, things a lot easier and makes the meetings go a lot smoother when you have those hot topic items. Um, if you've been up there more often and it's a regular thing, or at least more of a regular thing.
Yeah.
Um, they think we can be more transparent.
Right.
And, and speaking of that, um, real quickly.
Absolutely.
Um, I think I CC'd you guys in on what's going on with, I'm trying to get more room in our handings for our county employees. Um, and so we're trying to get Charlie from the hospital to move, or at least the mental health, uh, to the North Lake Clinic, which is already set up for them. And where we can have an office, the commissioners can have an office to go to, um, our planning and can have a place to go once a week. I think, you know, a lot of our planning stuff is up there. And so if our planning people go up there once a week, I think that would be beneficial to the whole community up there. But we just don't have a place to go. Uh, our sheriff's deputies are all packed in one room.
One of these.
And we got our parole probation that's having trouble having enough room. And so I think we really need to start moving on providing more services to North Lake. And so, um, I think that's gonna all help. And having those meetings there will help, so I, I like the idea.
Okay.
Consensus?
Consensus, I think.
Yeah, yeah. A consensus on having them all meetings up there more frequently.
Yeah.
And then you bring the consensus on something else. Or just updating it basically.
Yeah, just updating it on what's going on with there.
Right.
And that's the case area known that we.
Oh, the email changes and everything, yeah.
I don't know if you saw the Charlie's last response.
I haven't, what was the last response?
Uh, basically that it provided for mental health, but it didn't provide for public health in the building.
Yeah.
Right, and so I, I responded back to him. I'm fine with keeping public health in there for now in our, in the county annex. But if we could at least move mental health out and free up some space for us to start our process.
We did build two rooms and, or two office rooms that were soundproofed and everything else along with, uh, another, um, office space. So there's three rooms total specifically for mental health purposes, to have mental health in that building there. So if there's a way we can help get them all working together, I definitely wanna support that. So, Dr. Wonsor and I spoke on the phone about it a little bit the other day actually as well, so hopefully there'll be some movement. True. Um, uh, liaison duty discussion. Um, Commissioner Schulemberg, did you have kind of a proposal of some of the things that you'd like to have on your liaisons? Or, uh, things that maybe you, you'd like to give to some of us, because I know you, you were a little heavy.
Uh, so yeah, a previous commissioner had a fairly good list, um, still, still sorting out, uh, kind of what the impact is to being that liaison to some of these as of due to it, but, uh, also wanted to just rename a few things and, you know, I think we all, it sounds like wanna add, uh, some, so that that's brought to focus his attention that we are a liaison to that, to that.
I, that those are actually part of our duties.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, one of them is, uh, I believe Commissioner Albertson was a liaison on air quality. I don't mind taking that on.
I don't mind you having.
Okay. And then the next one is, uh, what you have listed under you is Fremont Resource Advisory Committee. Uh, I think that's improperly, uh, named, um, except only refers to the forest.
Right.
And we've got, you know, Forest Service, B L M, Fish and Wildlife, Sheldon Park, and really where every part of the forestry needs to be.
Yeah.
We can be that liaison to them, whether it be, uh, any big natural resource.
And so I think it's a consensus we can change that to natural resource.
Yeah.
Natural resources.
Yeah, we need that.
And I, I did talk with, um, Commissioner Schulemberg, um, although I really love the natural resources end of it. Um, with Commissioner Schulemberg having thirty years of experience, I think it would be wise for the county for him to be that liaison now and, uh, like I told him, I'll just be in his back pocket a bunch and, but, I mean, he knows way more about it. And also, Barry, would you, I'm on the rack. That's an appointed position, so I'm assuming I'll stay on that for now. And, but I do want to make sure part of the natural resources has got our sage grouse stuff on it. I would kinda like to work on the wild horse end. And if you didn't mind, I'm just, I spoke with, um, some of the wild horse people last week. I'd like to, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
That end of it, and so, but I'm more than happy to.
You know, I think we'll have it flow, kind of go through different topics. There's so many topics on the natural resources side, wild horse being one of them, sage grouse.
Right, and that's why I sent you the sage con contact, so you can get on there.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I like you have something.
Yeah, so we have a former commissioner serving on the B L M rack. Should I talk to someone about getting that updated to a current commissioner?
If you have me.
Oh.
Me.
Okay, or B L M too?
Well, that is the B L, that is the rack, right?
Okay, I just needed to clarify because.
Okay, Forest has had a rack.
No, it's it's been at BLM.
Okay. Okay.
And I was appointed.
But there is a former commissioner who still attends those meetings.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the Forest is gonna need to do one here.
No, former commissioner who's still.
Okay, I just wanted.
So, he is a member at large.
Okay.
But he doesn't, he's not filling the commissioner slot.
No.
I just wanted to make sure I had the right.
Yeah.
No, absolutely, and and if we could get that actually on the liaison list as well.
For the.
The rack.
Yeah.
And just make sure that that's actually listed on there, because it is.
I have it on my list.
Okay. So I just added it.
Also, uh, in addition, uh, renaming under James's, uh, liaison list, he has fire council. Like to get that re renamed to Lake County Fire Council. Or acronym LCFDB.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I have on mine, I think I already put that on there already, LCFDB. And then Commissioner Albertson, I didn't know if, uh, possibly you would be willing to take over.
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna.
Take that off my list.
I had talked, I wanted to talk to you about that. I, it's, I have it on my. Oh, this is the assumed one?
Okay, so maybe it's already been corrected, that's not immediately put it over there, so therefore it is over there.
And then federal lands, I'm assuming that's going to be under our natural resources.
Okay, and, uh, what is the Lakeview Area Large Employer Consortium, consortium? Because I've never had an update on that ever.
I don't even have an idea what that is.
So until we find out what it is.
Let's omit that maybe?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm sure everybody's listening. Other than, we're always looking for a large employer.
Well, let's, let's. Well, you know, it might have been something that was formed way back in the day, you know, maybe stuff with, uh, maybe the railroad even. Um, because, uh, I know a lot of the larger employers were utilizing railroad partnerships and, you know, so, yeah, it could be part of that. But, but if it's not, none of us have ever had one.
Who had a probation role?
Uh, that's. Any corrections?
Who has one?
That's Barry, that's that.
So would you be willing to give that to me also? Um, I didn't take it for first two years because I worked so closely with them. I didn't want it to look like, but I'd like to go back to that if you guys don't mind.
I did.
Sorry, what did you say?
He wanted the corrections, uh, finding corrections, so he's taking that. Local Public Safety, uh, Coordination Council, that's the one. Um, that was the one that I talked to Jake about earlier, and I think you, you and I were there when he came in and told us that he's gonna try and have another meeting. Because we haven't had one in about a year.
Because of COVID.
Yeah, so.
We're, we'll, we'll coordination council.
And that's on yours, so.
So can we make that on all of ours?
I think it should be.
Yeah.
Could.
So who's going to attend those meetings?
It's our, it's already a public meeting, so we won't get in trouble, like we all should have.
Right.
Okay.
And I attended one once before when the other commissioner was there, so.
And Jake's really good about letting us know when they are.
Yep.
And then that way, we all can kind of go.
Yep, okay, so, and then you have museum and planning?
Yeah.
Is there any else that you would want or not want to change?
Uh, so I would like to have EOCCO added, um, to mine, I was talking about that earlier. Um, some central early learning.
Hey, what's up?
Doing anything with that?
Not right now.
I haven't really been involved in that, I think, after years with that, uh, some other folks, and I just haven't been.
That maybe that needs to be.
On the question list?
Yeah.
Which one is it?
I I think they may require a commissioner, but I just haven't been able to.
South Central earning, earning, early learning under changes?
Yeah, and maybe another commissioner would have some luck with it, but I just haven't really, I, for over a year now, I have not been able to talk with it at all. And, uh, I don't know if I'm needed or wanted or anything, I get a few emails now and then and that's it. So, um, haven't had any real direct contact.
So the federal lands and Fremont Resource Advisory Committee will both be under natural resources? I'm assuming we get.
That's the same thing. Yes, that's the same thing, so those will be repeats. And the other repeat that I have is Oregon for early learning. So if we could just get early learning and put it together and then maybe. Basically, who wants to be a partner? Uh, would you like to do a plan? Well, it could be, um, yeah, I don't know, but I would at least like maybe have a presentation or something at some point. Maybe an update from early learning folks and I can maybe send out an email and reach out to them, ask if they want to do that. But I have, like I said, I have had no communication whatsoever. And, uh, it's just kind of deceptive to say that I'm a liaison because I don't know what I'm a liaison to. Other than that, um, still on the bottom.
He wants to.
Yeah.
He wants to play.
I know, I know, I know. Okay, Clay with regional housing, that was one that I, I just have no idea about. Um, is there anything on my list that either of you guys have any interest on, just at all?
All right, I guess we've done a little bit of horse trading there, like to see the new list.
Okay.
And we'll probably just go with it, unless you guys are really seeing some. I know, James, you talked to me about planning, uh, but if you had planning and treasure, I wouldn't like seeing those split up.
Well, right, and treasure, you, if you'd like, you can work with the treasure and be liaison to the treasure. I've been liaison for several years, so we can swap. Does that sound good to you? It's a good liaison to have.
Yeah, I, I don't pair one word together.
Right, and we, and she's right across the hall from all three of us, so it really doesn't matter too much, but, um, we can, we can definitely keep those split. But planning, I I don't mind being a liaison to planning. So.
So planning and landfill are in the same. Landfill's right above planning.
Oh, landfill's over on March right now.
Yeah.
On this one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So he's liaison to landfill. And so if you wanna swap planning and treasure, I don't really know what else, we can just see how the new list shakes out, like you said.
I, I'm good either way.
Okay.
That's fine.
All righty, um, with that, we'll just move on to the very last option, the last topic and then we'll be done. Um, appointing a representative for the SCOAC Executive Board, is there anything you guys wanna, um? Did you have a recommendation for that, it's kind of nice to get that sorted out before the full board meeting for SCOAC in February?
So my only comment on that is I'm with SCOED a lot on the economic development. Well, I'm the chair of SCOED.
You are the chair of SCO.
And, um.
That's very. We run two meetings at a row.
Yeah, well, uh, on that flop side of that is, on the flip side of that is. If I'm on the SCOED and you're on the SCOAC, two of us are gonna have to go to those meetings. See what I'm saying?
Oh, I agree, but we typically do anyway most of the time.
So, but it doesn't really.
Because we need two commissioners to show, to, in order to even convene.
Yeah, we have to have two commissioners for, uh, yeah, and so.
So, such a word. Uh, economic development.
District.
SCOAC, yeah.
SCOAC is area transportation.
SCOAC is area transportation. And that actually is, was on your list of liaisons, um, the Transportation Executive Board.
Which, which is really good, because like Commissioner Winters, he did some amazing things with that. I mean, he was the one that pretty much got the white mountain. He played a major role in getting the white mountain project. Some work on Horse Mountain. And so it's a, it's a one that we need to really focus on because. We ever want to get the. Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't treat this down.
Yeah.
Do you have a flag?
We did, yeah. So I, I kind of feel like there's some up to you there to tie that with the natural resource side too.
Okay.
In ways that maybe didn't get tied in before. So unless you really wanna be that person, I'm willing to keep it on this side for now.
You definitely wanna, you, you definitely want, wanna, it's down to you and me being on the, uh, the chair basically for that. But, uh, um, both of us can still let him, so, but I, I don't mind at all, uh, having you as chair. So I'll be chair of that. Okay, then I'll make a recommendation come to full board meeting next, uh, next month, to have you as chair. And if there's consensus on that?
Yeah.
Okay.